Yeah, I'm going for the ride and find myself I am alive and I saw. Still, I run towards the wind and let the challenge draw me in, 'cause I want more. Oh, we are all looking for adventure. 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 Oh, wake up heart and wake up mind and see the world is yours to find and oh. With every passing day, there's more calling you out, out to explore, get up and go. There is joy found in the race and I feel it in the place where I'm free. And I simply can't deny it that I feel adventure calling out to me. Yeah, we are all looking for adventure. 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 Looking for adventure. We are all looking for adventure. We are all looking for adventure. We are all looking for adventure. And I'm living free, living free, living free, and I was meant to be. Living free, living free, living free, and I was meant to be. I'm living free, living free, living free, and I was meant to be free, meant to be free.
Gloria Gonzalez Delucchia. Anna Smith.
Here.
Christine Maurer.
Here.
Trish Bodie. Shade Fashakun. Shade Fashakun.
Here.
Francesca Roman.
Sir.
Paul Gauthier.
Here.
It is 6:15 PM and with the quorum of the board present, I call this meeting of the Leander ISD Board of Trustees to order. And we are going to start with our opening ceremony with our student pledge. It is my pleasure to welcome Cadet Isabel Bailey of the Lone Star Company Navy Junior ROTC at Vista Ridge High School, Go Rangers, to lead the pledge of allegiance and Texas pledge. Cadet Bailey, a 10th grade student at Vista Ridge High School, is the daughter of Michelle Bailey. Cadet Bailey is an active member of the Lone Star Company's varsity physical fitness, unarmed drill, and the Color Guard teams. Cadet Bailey takes pride in serving the community as a volunteer at Melbourne Park and local adopter road cleanups. Despite being her first year in NJROTC, Cadet Bailey has competed in every drill competition and has accumulated 30 hours of community service. Her commitment to service, sharp personnel appearance, and exemplary conduct earned her the designation as Cadet of the Month for January 2024. Cadets Bailey's performance and dedication were a vital part of the Lone Stars Company's success, which resulted in her unit qualifying to compete at the National NJROTC Competition in Pensacola, Florida. Her actions reflect most favorably on the Lone Star Company Navy Junior ROTC, her school, and Leander ISD. Well done, Cadet Bailey.
Please stand and join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please remain standing for the Texas pledge. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
If you'll join me in a moment of silence, please. Thank you.
We will now move to our favorite part of the evening, our spotlight on learning, and we're going to hear from our very own Director of Athletics Jonathan Lamb and some of our amazing student athletic trainers. Welcome.
Thank you for having us this evening. It is my pleasure to introduce and help shine a spotlight on this special group of people. It's a perfect timing. March is National Athletic Training Month, and so we are honoring and shining a spotlight on our athletic training program. We have representatives from each of our high schools, student representatives, and we have four representatives from our high schools. Two of them are, they're working tonight, but we get the other four, and they are the star of the show, so we're going to let them talk about the program.
First, we want to thank the board and athletics for having us here and recognizing us tonight. My name is Wayne Larson. I'm one of the 12 athletic trainers that are on staff in Leander ISD. And I want to kind of build a little bit on what Coach Lamb said. So athletic trainers are highly skilled allied health professionals. Our emphasis is in the care, management, treatment, rehabilitation of athletic-related injuries. So as athletic trainers, we see anywhere between 600 and 1,000 athletes, depending on which high school campus you're talking about. And we also oversee the student athletes on the middle school campus for our feeder systems. So it keeps us pretty busy. As athletic trainers, all of the staff athletic trainers have at least a bachelor's degree, if not a master's, with an emphasis in athletic training course specific. And during that time when we get our degree, we have to do at least 1,800 hours of internship in the athletic training programs at that college that we go to. That allows us to sit for the state licensure. So we're all state licensed. Some of us even have our national certifications. And to maintain that, we have to do at least 40 hours of continuing education in sports medicine over a two-year period to maintain that license. Now, what we're able to do at the high schools and the programs we're over to offer, we would not be able to do that without the real stars, and that's our students. These young men and women, they work before and after school, weekends, holidays. They help us with daily duties, treatments, rehab, first aid. They travel with our sports programs. They are our eyes and ears in the programs. So I'm going to get to go first. I'm going to introduce my student. This is Emily Ross. She's a senior from Rouse High School. Emily, I know next year you're going to be going to Tarleton to pursue athletic training. Tell us real quickly how the athletic training educational program has helped you to get your next step.
Well, I'm the first student trainer at Rouse to do Sports Medicine IV, so it's really helped me to build my confidence and like know what I need to know for college academics. And which gives me a big like step up for Tarleton's program. And I want to do athletic training in Formula One or rodeos after college, so.
And I'm going to go ahead and introduce our Leander High School senior, and this is Ankita Ganesh. Mr. Martinez is actually working for baseball right now, so she is also a senior. So tell us a little bit, what does the life look like in a week for a student athletic trainer at Leander High School?
Okay, so I feel like depending what season we're talking about, fall season is definitely a long week, I'd say, for all of us. But at least for myself, my spring sport is a lot more chill, I would say. So depending on if you have morning treatment, like you said, or what your schedule looks like for that week. Regardless, it's still a pretty long week, but I think it's rewarding at the end of the day, so.
I am Stephanie Austin. I'm one of the athletic trainers at Cedar Park High School, along with David Bowman, who has been here since Cedar Park opened. I am introducing Vandergrift Student Trainer, because both of them are at their track meet that they're hosting. This is, sorry, let me get it up. This is Junior Ava Cho. Did I say that right? All right. She, like many of the student trainers that we have, are also in other programs. So why don't you tell us how you balance student training and the other programs that you are a part of?
Okay, so I'm in the Vandergrift Chamber Choir. So we do a lot of after-school and a lot of travel, which conflicts with sports medicine some of the time. So I always make sure to have like a clear schedule and plan and email my teachers and stuff, because a lot of those times are conflicting. Because today, for example, I had a chamber after-school rehearsal, because we're practicing for UIL, and then I also had a baseball game. So I had to make sure that I can practice at home for my music and then also be attending the baseball game to care for the athletes. So it's just about organizing and making sure that you get everything done, so, thank you.
And then this is my student Lauren Wicker. She is a freshman this year. Lauren, please tell us what other duties are assigned that we take care of outside of health-related things?
So for football games on Fridays, I, me, and one of the other student trainers help set up headsets for the coaches so that they can communicate during games. We also hand out football equipment at the beginning of the year and game day equipment every Friday.
Hi, I'm Molly Kidd. I'm one of the athletic trainers at Glen High School, along with Jason Allen, who's also been there since they opened, but just not quite as long as David Bowman. And this is my student Savannah Rasmussen. And Savannah, please stand next to me. I know that you have changed your mind a couple of times, but what attracted you to the sports med program?
I would say when I was going into high school, choosing all my classes, I really wanted to go into the medical field, being a doctor or a nurse or something like that. I didn't really know, so I was like, sports medicine seems like, you know, somewhere that could help me figure out what I wanted to do. So I joined it, and while I was in that program, and still am in the program, I noticed that I was drifting towards more of like the behind-the-scenes stuff rather than the medicine side of stuff. So my plan is going forward to look into more athletic directing and being in the behind-the-scenes rather than going the medical route.
Hi, I'm Sophia Munoz. I am representing Vista Ridge. My coworker Jose Correia is covering baseball tonight. And this is our junior student. Her name's McKenna Correia, and she's going to talk about her passion for sports medicine.
I love, oh, sorry. Oh my gosh. I love the rush of adrenaline that I get at football games. I love it so much. I love not knowing what to expect when being called out onto the field during an emergency. But what I do know is that we are equipped to always help them.
Thank you again for shining a spotlight on this amazing group. We would not function at the level that we do without them. They are selfless, behind-the-scenes, and do everything for us and our athletes, and we definitely appreciate them, and we cannot say thank you enough. Thank you, guys.
Board members, let's go get our picture, please. Thank you so much, student athletic trainers. And next, we will watch a video celebrating some of Leander ISD's students and staff with our video recognitions.
Welcome back, one Leander ISD. I'm Claire.
And I'm Arna. We're from Canyon Ridge Middle School. Before we send you off to a well-deserved spring break, we want to give you a recap of some of the accomplishments across our school district.
The past month, student athletes across the district showed up and showed out in the UIL state competitions.
Let's start on the mat. Our Cedar Park High School freshman Nathan Riley and senior Rachel Corley earned gold medals in the 106 and 107 pound weight classes, respectively, at the UIL State Wrestling Tournament. Vandergrift's own Jacob Henry earned second place in the 285 pound weight class, and rounding out the top three finishers were two more vipers, Charlie Trujillo at the 113 pound weight class and Derek Ruffin in the 120 pound weight class. Seven other Leander ISD wrestlers from Glen, Leander, Vandergrift, and Vista Ridge finished as finalists. Way to leave it all out there on the mat. Making a big splash, our high schoolers showed that they not only went on land, but in water as well.
Rouse had an impressive showing by snagging three silver medals in the girls category and one bronze in the boys category. The Raiders' second-place finishes came in the 200-yard medley relay, the 200-yard freestyle relay, and Ella McQuinn in 100-yard freestyle event. On the boys' side, Caifanaro swam to third place in the 100-yard freestyle.
Sticking in the 5A competition, Cedar Park's Evan Roberts grabbed silver in the boys' 100-yard butterfly. At 6A, Vandergrift's Aaron Gordon secured another silver medal in the boys' 100-yard backstroke. With swimmers and divers representing each LISD high school, 14 others competed in the championship finals, along with 26 in the consolation finals. The celebrations don't end there, because this week is Texas Educational Diagnostics Appreciation Week.
These professionals help provide the next generation of leaders with the knowledge and skills through the development and recommendation of individualized teaching strategies amateurs. Here to join us in showing our appreciation is Assistant Superintendent and Special Programs and Services Kimberly Waltman.
Happy Educational Diagnostics Appreciation Week. We are incredibly thankful to have a top-notch team of diagnosticians in Leander ISD. Our evaluation team has completed thousands upon thousands of evaluations for our students that we serve. And because of your dedication, hard work, and commitment, we have thousands of students that are receiving the services that they need to achieve their dreams and their goals and be successful within their future. From the bottom of our hearts in Leander ISD, thank you for all that you do and celebrate big.
To close things out, we want to offer congratulations to the Office of School and Community Relations for the recent achievements at this year's Texas School Public Relations Association Star Awards.
That's right. They were recognized for some of their outstanding work. In the category of photo portfolio, they received the crystal commendation. The SCR team was also a crystal finalist in the school/community partnership category, recognizing its leadership LISD program. They received a Best-of-Categorie distinction in the brochures for the 2022/2023 State of the District brochure. Along with those wins, they had 16 gold medals, 10 silver, and one bronze. Congratulations to this dedicated group of storytellers who shine a light on the amazing things happening in one LISD.
Wow, it's unbelievable to see how much Leander ISD continues to accomplish.
Until next time, we want to wish you a fun and safe spring break. And always remember, there's no place like LISD.
That was so good. Okay, next is citizens comment portion of our agenda. Before I invite the first speaker to the podium, we're going to watch a short introductory video.
Hello, my name is Dylan Wallace. I'm a 7th grader at Canyon Ridge Middle School. The district and the Board of Trustees are the local government body responsible for serving the educational needs of all schoolchildren, like me and my friends here in Leander Independent School District. Their mission is to cultivate each individual student while creating a safe and supportive environment. The board is now taking up the citizen comment agenda item. This is dedicated time during this meeting to hear from the whole community, and the entire LISD family is listening. The district believes that Leander family thrives when we ensure a welcoming, safe, and caring environment. To our speakers, before you speak, we hope you have read guidelines specified in board operating procedures and BED local. The board wants to hear from everyone. Please be mindful of your conduct and the example you are choosing to set when presenting complex information. Remember that schoolchildren of all ages may participate in board meetings, either by watching them online, or you might even see some of us in the audience. Still remember that there are other ways you can communicate with the board. You can send them an email, come to a board cafe, or just tell them that you would like to chat sometime. When the board president calls your number, please remember to watch the timer and focus your remarks to the time allotted. We know it can be hard, but please conclude your comments when you hear the chime.
Speaker number one. I don't see her. So we'll move to speaker number two, who I don't see either. Speaker number three, I see her.
Good evening, board, president, vice president. I had told my son, no surprise dancing. I would not do that to him. But they're all back in class. They got one time to come and talk to you, but they wanted me to convey this. It's about half of your Category 1 OCPE dancers at Dance Institute. A big heartfelt thank you for hearing them. They're excited to be Leander School District students next year and contribute in the classroom and on the dance floor. And you're all cordially invited to their spring recital at Dance Institute. I myself are actually providing you tickets if you want them. So it's in May, and we can't wait to show you what they do outside the classroom. Thank you.
And that is the end of our citizens comments for tonight. We will now move to the consent agenda items. Board members, do you have any motions related to consent agenda items?
I move that the, I move the consent agenda items to be approved as presented.
A second.
I have a motion from Christine, a second from Francesca. Any discussion? No? All those in favor? Six, six, six yeses and none opposed, sorry. And now we will move to the superintendent's report. Bruce, you're up.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. All right, we're going to jump right in here. We are very fortunate to have a Board of Trustees who believes in learning and learning not only for our students and learning not only for our staff, but learning for themselves. And so several of you attended winter governance down in Galveston and had the good fortune of meeting this young lady who represented LISD in an incredible way. And so I do want to play you a short video that one of our board members might have recorded of this young lady down there. Rocketeer, so to speak. So what caught my attention is, let me read something from her application. She says, "In high school, I noticed a sharp gender gap in aerospace engineering." "I was the only woman, and I felt like stumbling into a secret club. Determined to break the mold, I founded the National Association of Rocketry Competition Team. This move wasn't just about rockets. It was a statement that women belonged in aerospace. It wasn't like crazy."
After my sophomore year, all summer, after speaking to that one teacher I was talking about earlier, I really researched into rocketry, aerospace, and being a pilot as well. And I learned a lot, and I read a statistic that only about 3% or 4% of pilots are female. So that was something that stuck with me, but put aside. And on my first day of school, I was super excited about this aerospace engineering class. Just imagine, I was ready with my bag and had like a few rockets in there and a few plans, all ready to show my teacher and start building. And I got there, and the laptop of the room, all guys, not a seat empty, the right half of the room, empty. So I just put my head down and sat down, and I was that for the first few days. But I was determined, this is where I belonged, and I was going to make a place for myself. So through projects and different avenues of leadership, I got to know all the other members of my class better, and soon we became a team. We made a bunch of awesome rockets and satellites that we competed with at the rocketry competition. And by the end of the year, I really felt like I had a place in the community. Additionally, this was my junior year. During my time off, I would also speak about rocketry through my rocketry and pilot and my journey as a pilot on my podcast and my social media, Aviate with Ananya. And through that, we've been able to connect with so many girls and women, especially who are really interested in this field. And I'm really glad to say that in this year's aerospace engineering class, from one, we jumped up to eight or nine females in the class, so that's amazing.
How do those guys greet you when you stroll into the hall of the worst group?
So at first, it was so awkward, because they would look up, look down, and I'm like, I'm like, looking like that. It's a girl. Sorry, man. Over time, over time, I was able to make some connections, and we really grew through conversation. And I really grew with confidence, too, as I was able to contribute and learn from them as well. So just in no time, we were able to, just see we was the collaborators who built some awesome rockets.
And you have a pilot's license?
Yes, I do.
Did you apply that in your application?
The weather didn't allow it.
Do you ever have a driver's license?
No.
So just in case you couldn't hear some of that, this is Ananya Kana. She's from Leander High School, and she won the Student Voice Scholarship from Tazby Winter Governance. She was the only female student in her rocketry class, aerospace engineering class at Leander High School. And she managed to turn that into nine students that are in that class coming up. So fundamental grassroots change because of what she believed in and who she is and her ability to own her own learning and move forward. Overcome difficulties, overcome all kinds of challenges. She does have a pilot's license, I don't know if you heard that, but she does not have a driver's license, so. Just incredible work. We're going to talk a little bit about empowered staff now, as well as empowered student learning and empowered learners. And so at this time, I'd like to invite some friends of mine to come up to the front here. So if we can have Lauren Carter and Jennifer Lopez and Dr. David Ellis. So if we can have Lauren Carter and Jennifer Lopez and Dr. David Ellis from Henry Middle School, and our science specialists from the central office. So I'm going to talk a little bit first and show you some things that they invited me to come and observe that are happening at Henry Middle School that I'm very excited about. As you know, we've been talking a lot about what does learning look like in Leander ISD. We've talked a lot about A.J. Giuliani's quote of, "Our job is not to prepare students for something. Our job is to help students prepare themselves for anything." And so as I see examples of what that might look like, I'm trying to showcase those with you. And so I want you to get just a little taste of that today. In this science classroom, this is a 6th grade science classroom that they invited me to go and see. And just to give you some background, they've already been doing a lot of work, experiments with different kinds of cups and how they hold heat and how they hold cool. If this thing will ever work. Thank you. Not only science, but also vocabulary built in. And so they have their own science word wall, which sometimes you only see in elementary classrooms, but I think is extremely important for us in other classrooms too. I'm going to let somebody else drive this. Are you driving? Okay. Of course, the scientific method, which, you know, it becomes kind of mundane sometimes. You always see it in a science classroom, but when you think about what it really is and how it forces the ownership of learning to the learner, then I think it becomes very important. I think this part of it is extremely important. They have a treatment agreement. You can't see this well here, but this treatment agreement has a lot of statements of what they agree to do with each other and how they agree to treat each other in that classroom. And all of them have committed to it and signed it off. And I think that's really extremely important. But here's the exciting part. These students are working on a demonstration experiment that is being conducted in a whole group. We talk a lot about small group instruction in our classrooms and that being important, cooperative learning. But that's not the only way that ownership of learning can happen. And so in this case, the students are all in one group. They are conducting a single experiment that's being directed by the teacher. This experiment has foil on this front piece. There's butter on the foil. On one side, they have a candle lit underneath the foil, and on the other side, they have placed two ice cubes. Those bridges that you see there are actually thermometers that are measuring the temperature at different points of the foil. And what they're struggling with, as you'll see in a second, is what is actually happening here? And how can they, as students, figure that out? I want to note a couple of things that you'll see also in this picture. There's individual accountability, so every student has a notebook. They are tracking scientifically in their journal what they're doing. They have tables of data that they're using at some point, and if you listen carefully, you'll hear them references, reference those. And then I want you to listen very carefully for where is the learning and who is owning the learning in this little example. And so I took a short video in here, and we're going to play that for you.
I want you to think back to our chart table. We have the option for heat moving to cold, cold moving to heat, or heating cold moving back and forth. With the people that you're sitting by again, look at your data and decide what you think is happening. Is the heat from the candle moving to the cold? Is the cold from the ice moving to the heat? Or do you notice a little bit of both? Talk about that with the people you're sitting next to.
All right, so I've invited Lauren and Jennifer here to talk about the work that they're doing. And then they're going to hand it off to David in a little bit.
Hi. Thank you for having us, Madam President and Board Trustees, tonight. Aren't that exciting? First of all, I have to give a shout out to our teachers. Our science teachers have been amazing along this journey with us. We're all trying to figure this out together, like what does 3D instruction really look like, which I'll get to that in a second. But they are amazing. Like, they've been diving into some learning this year and taking that learning back to their campuses with full enthusiasm and just eager to try this in their classrooms. So shout out to our teachers. They're amazing. What you were seeing right there was one of our teachers piloting an instructional resource that's up for consideration for our new science teaks for next year. And our team has been diving into what the new teaks are going to look like, and they are phenomena-driven, three-dimensional standards. And essentially what that means is the phenomena is the real-world experience or phenomenon that kind of drives the learning. Whereas, and the students are diving into it and questioning and building their understanding of the science concepts by using that phenomenon. So, and they are thinking like scientists, and they're talking like scientists, and they are being scientists. So that's where the three-dimensional approach comes from. They're diving into that content by thinking like scientists and engaging as a scientist would. So it's super, super exciting what is, what's coming up. And our team, like I said, has been diving into what that really means because it's new. It is a completely new way of thinking of how our students are engaging in science. So it's super, super, super exciting. We've done a lot of learning, and we, when we first started diving into it, what, three years ago, we were, our heads were spinning, and we were, we were, what does this really mean? We were trying to access as many resources as we could to understand what three-dimensional teaching and learning really, really looked like. And then it was almost, it was by chance, I happened to get an email from an organization, didn't know who they were. They were called TEXI, which is Texas Collaborations for Science Innovation. And they are a consulting group, an educational consulting group that works with Melinda and Bill Gates Foundation. And so they were sending out AL call and trying to get as many Texas districts on board as they could to come together. And we applied for it, and we got it because we knew that we needed help. We needed help, and we, because we spun for a little bit, not going to lie. We spun for a little bit because it's big. It was going to be big work, and we knew it. So we needed to, we had some help on what the learning needed to be, what it could look like, and how. So from our teachers to our admin to you guys. So, and then, and then eventually, so that we can make sense of that for our students and bring these exciting experiences to our students. So luckily, they accepted us, and we are one of five districts that have come together over the course of, well, a year and a half now. It ends in June, so a two-year grant. And they provided us the money to begin a science leadership cohort this year. And what we did was, throughout the year, we brought our leads together when dove into instructional practices. And they, it was very, very powerful because they had an opportunity to come together and get the learning themselves, and then talk with their district PLC members and kind of wrestle with that. What did that look like, and how can we turn that around for our PLCs, but eventually to our students? So like I said, we were super, super lucky to have that opportunity to bring that to our teachers. And Lauren's going to talk to you a little bit, take that on a little bit further. We're really good at this. Talking in front of everyone. Okay. The grant challenged our thinking about what it looks like to lead instructional practices and curriculum at a district level. It asked us to dive into what does it really mean for professional learning to be effective and sustainable? It challenged us to think about if you don't have the resources you need, how can you be creative? It asked us to think about what does shared leadership mean? And how do you build that within your district and then outside of that? And so they really gave us the basically framework. And then, as good teachers do, they asked us, okay, what does this make sense? Like, what does this mean to you, and how are you going to live it out? And that's where the struggle is for us to come up with what is the best next step for our people so that we are doing right by everyone, making sure that the outcome is what you see on the screen, right? And that's a big responsibility, and not necessarily a place that you would think you want to be, but it's great work. And so really, what is that, the challenge in the shared leadership is talking about partnerships. So we started last spring by meeting with the campuses that we support, their principals, and talking about, this is what's coming with our teaks, this is the learning we want to do with our leads, this is how we want to build their capacity, and how we want that to then be able to multiply on your campus. And we also know that you have a campus improvement plan, and you have your own focus. And what is that coming up next year, and how does that align with what we're doing, and how do we support each other? And we had those intentional conversations because we are not different. We are not another thing. We are the thing together, and we have to make sure that that makes sense to ourselves so we can speak to that when we're in PLCs, supporting the campus vision with the work that we're doing with our teams. And also that our leadership knows that we understand and know what they're working on so that when we are there, it is not, curriculum is going to say something, and it's not necessarily aligned. That's not our vision at all, and that was not what we wanted. So the reason that it's going the way it is, the feedback that we are getting from teachers, the classroom experiences that they are coming back to our cohorts, talking about and celebrating, taking risks, and seeing what their kids can do, and changing their perspective on what they think science instruction is. Because we sat in the classroom for many, many years, 10 years in this district, and this is not what I was doing in my classroom. So we are leading something we have not taught. Now we have taught it with our teachers, but it is very unnerving sometimes to ask someone to do something that you yourself have not done. So really kind of wrapping ourselves around the partnership and having those conversations so that we're all on the same page, but also it's grounded in the graduate profile. The statements that we have there for what students are doing, we can check those boxes in our learning logs. We can have those conversations and say, we are all pointing our arrows together, going in the same direction. And each campus might, may look different, but that's because of what their focus is. But every conversation we had was able to align to that. So if you're asking about the work we're doing, how we got to this place, it really is because of the relationships that we have been building, and we're continuing to build, and the partnerships that we are having, that we have with our principals, the APs that support science, our instructional coaches, and our PLC leads, and our PLCs. Like, knowing our people is what we're very passionate about, can't tell. And we're very excited to see what comes with our new adoption and the next round of professional learning moving forward. And piggyback off of that, that was David's campus. And the partnership that we have really built to make that happen has been, been good and really hard, but good. And David intentionally has been partnering with our curriculum department, not just science, it was all four of us, and really talking about what his vision is and how our focus aligns with that, and how can we see that out together. So we have been coming together with Jennifer Borland, the instructional coach, David, as well as some of the student success facilitators, and talking about the learning that we have over here with our science leadership cohort. What can that look like on the campus to further his vision? And then we are partnering with leading those conversations in vertical conversations as well as in PLCs. And that is truly, the movement's been great because of that partnership. So it, like, you know, to piggyback on what Lauren was saying, it has to be there. We have to work together. And I've really enjoyed that partnership, not just with David's campus, but with others as well.
So David, tell us a little bit about, this is science that we've seen, but this is happening in other places on your campus as well. And then if you wouldn't mind just talking a little bit about how we spread this to other middle schools in the district and take it from there.
Okay. What I want to tell you is it's not just about science. I am amazed at what our kids are doing in science. I'm walking into 6th grade science and listening to these kids, you're seeing one class, talking about science in a way that you don't hear sometimes in your high schools, about talking about energy transfer and molecules and stuff that we don't talk about in a 6th grade science class. And I'm seeing the same thing in my science, my 7th science classroom, they're studying life science. They're studying a whole unit where they're trying to figure out what's going on with this child who ends up, and I can spoil it now because they just finished the unit, had celiac disease. But it started with them looking at a bunch of pictures of endoscopies that were around the hallway, and they were just taking notes on what they observed in all of these various real humans' endoscopic pictures and things. So here's what I would say. If we're going to prepare our kids for the world they're going into, not the world that we live in, we need to be thinking about what are our kids going to be doing in 2034, 44, 45? And if everything in the world can be found, anything, any content can be found on an internet-connected device for free, what I've been saying is that it's not what people know that's going to matter in the future. It's what they can do with what can be known. And so the trick is not much more, is not so much about how are we getting knowledge into kids, but how are we teaching kids how to think and then use that knowledge in ways? And so it's not just about science. I'm wildly excited about what we're doing in science. But I'm just going to give you just a couple of examples of what does that look like when you're thinking about, how do we think, how do we communicate, how do we push on ideas, how do we work together to collaborate? How do we probe each other's for ideas? And all of these things, I mean, we know adults that can't do that. So we're actively trying to teach our students how to do it. But you can walk into my 6th grade ELA, there's a purpose for the learning beyond just the factoids. So I just got invited today to come, 6th grade, when we get back from break, has got the library. All of 6th grade is doing a poetry jam, and each kid's reading out their poetry that they've been written. It's at the end of the culminating part of their poetry assignment in 6th grade. And I've been invited to come because they want me to be a guest reader for some of the, some of the poetry. My 7th grade, and I know Ms., I think Ms. Romans came, recently had a Socratic seminar. They finished a unit on dystopian literature, because that's a big thing in 7th grade. They're really into dystopian literature. Ask your children. And they did a Socratic seminar where they were wrestling at the end of the unit about two questions. Of course, they learned about plot, character development, all the things you would learn about literature. But the purpose of what they were doing was then chewing on how does dystopian literature inform us about how one person can make a difference in the world? Second part of that question was, how does power influence people? And the conversations that kids had interpreting what they were doing and then wrestling, those are big ideas for 7th graders. It was awesome to see. You can go to my social studies class in 7th grade, they finished, you know, they did a unit on Texas annexation and the Mexican-American War. But their question, and they learned facts about all of those things. But the question they're wrestling with is how do you decide when or if the ends justify the means? Because that was an important question about how was Sam Houston approaching it versus Walmart? They then moved into their Civil War reconstruction, their first part, they kind of broke into two questions they're wrestling with for Civil War was, how do disagreements lead to conflicts? And the second part, as they were studying about reconstruction and learning about that, what are the lessons we can learn from that? Again, they learned content, but it wasn't about, do you remember these facts and these things? The question was, how do we resolve conflicts? And a part of that, they had to take that learning and apply it to the conflicts that were in their lives now, and could they do that? 8th grade social studies did a driving question in the American Revolution. How can a revolution, how can a rebellion lead to a revolution? But they used the time for their assessment, they had a creative assessment to demonstrate their learning. They had a bunch of ways they could pick out doing it. They had a rubric where they had to do these things in their performance. They had to have a clear definition of a rebellion, two or more claims that addressed the driving question, conceptual historical evidence regarding the case and time period. They had to have at least three sources of evidence to back it up. An explanation to connect, how did your evidence, what's your reasoning? An explanation to connect, how did your evidence, what's your reasoning for why that answers the question? They had to have a competing viewpoint, um, that acknowledged the other side. And then there was a creativity component of that. Um, they were just teaching kids how claim evidence and reasoning came about. Later, I recently, I said they were, their final assessment on this other one was more writing because they'd been working with claims, evidence and reasoning. How do you do those? Um, and their question was during the new republic era, which foreign or domestic event had the most impact on the United States and why? And it's a blank sheet. Kids got to put that on there. But, and they have a rubric that looks at their clear aims, historical evidence, their explanation for how it did and things like that. I'm going to finish with mathematics because I hit all of the subjects there, cool stuff happening. I'm going to tell you a story that happened in sixth grade mathematics. We've been working with building thinking classrooms. Um, y'all may have heard about some of that work. Yep. As a part of that, you have vertical non-permanent surfaces. I don't know about you guys, but I'm brainstorming, give me a pen and a whiteboard and it's full up and we're just standing around doing that. Most of us do that. Well, that's a lot of what's going on in our math classes. I had a guest visitor, um, took him into a sixth grade math class, his last, end of the six weeks. Um, it's the last day of the six weeks. Um, and with the boards are set up around the room, they're all set up to do it. I'm walking in and the kids are working and I said, what are y'all doing today? And they go, we're having a free day. And the teacher goes, well, that's not exactly what we're doing. Um, and they were finishing up their last assignment. She was with a small group table, uh, at her horseshoe table, pulling a small group working on some things. And so they were working on their stuff. And so I'm explaining to this visitor, what are these boards for and what's happening? And the teacher comes up, knocks me, taps me on the shoulder and says, do you want to see it in action? I said, sure. And so she real quickly, whoop, got all the kids' attention, pulled out her phone, randomized the groups, kids in groups of three randomly put up there, went to their board, they threw up a question that had been a leftover question they hadn't chewed on before. Remember, we're shortly after the Super Bowl. And the question was, um, the Super Bowl sold this many tickets, made this much money, how much profit did they make? And then last year they sold this many tickets, how much money, how much profits did they make? And what was the percentage of increase or decrease? It was a really percentage of increase or decrease problem. Um, so the kids start working on the assignment and the numbers are like crazy with, I mean, they're big numbers, right? So they, if you've tried doing long division, most of us will pick out our calculator. They're doing a long division and some of these kids have realized, well, we can drop off the zeros, we'll add them back in later. And so they're working through it. And so I went to this group and said, what are they doing? Have you seen what they're doing over there? Go talk, see what they're doing over there. And they went over there and they came back and was talking and the teacher's doing things. And so about 15, 10 minutes later, I stepped back and I pulled the guy aside and I said, listen to this math class. When was the last time you were in a math class where the whole group, they're all at their boards, they were talking, they were going to other boards and getting information, they were asking questions to the teachers, it was all a hot buzz. And remember, they had a free day. She interrupted their free day to do math and it was like, it was magical. And so I guess the point is if we focus them on, yes, content's important, but it's not what you know that matters, it's what you can do with what can be known. You organize and teach teachers, how does this kind of instruction look? Because we weren't taught that way. I, I did not teach that way. Um, but it can be done and it's, it's wildly exciting to see the engagement of the kids and more importantly, the level of thinking that can come out of their brains when we organize them to do it. And so, um, it's, science is doing some amazing things and that partnership has been great. Um, and we partnership with all of my, uh, specialists, um, on all of these things. But, um, it is not just a science thing, it is a every subject thing. And it's not just a career in technology and it's there. Um, it is everything and it's really exciting to see what's happening in Leander schools. So.
Thank you, David. Thank you, Jennifer. Thank you, Lauren. I really appreciate you. Sitting in the back there is Anna White Even and she's part of the Motley Crue that is taking on all this job. So thank you so much. I really appreciate you being here tonight. I'm going to keep talking because there's some other things that I need to talk to you about tonight, if you don't mind. Um, we are going to talk a little bit about safe and innovative learning environments. Um, and specifically about the long range plan. As you know, we do have a long range planning committee, um, and they are working constantly right now on trying to update the long range plan for the district based on the new data that we have. So I want to spend a little bit of time with you tonight. Um, I am going to ask for some direction from the board tonight, uh, in terms of certain things that, um, we want to try to accelerate in the district. Um, and so I want to talk a little bit about, um, long range plan and, and what that looks like. This is the existing long range plan. Um, the layout of this document, there's parameters at the top, we're going to visit those in just a second. Um, in the middle are, uh, when new campuses are going to show up on the timeline as we go forward, um, as well as on the bottom there are some, um, of our opportunities for facility optimization. And so if we visit the top of that. Yep. So these are the parameters that we established at the very beginning of this process. And I just want to remind us of what these are. Um, our number one goal here is to strengthen the student experience. I very purposefully showed you an example of what learning can and what we, what learning we want to see in Leander ISD as we go forward. Um, and that's part of what we mean by strengthen the student experience. Um, in terms of the long range plan, we've said that we want that to be establishing long-term stability. We want access to choice options and we also want to honor the neighborhood school concept where it's possible with the long range plan. And on the other side of that, at the same time, while we're doing all of this wonderful learning, we also want to make sure that we're being fiscally responsible. Um, and that means maximizing the usage of our district facilities through strategic rezoning, which you've seen us do at the secondary level, and then for new schools at the elementary level. Um, and then also these optimization opportunities. The reason that that becomes important for us now is because of our uneven growth in the district. So just a reminder that we're shrinking in student population in the southern portion of the district, somewhat similar to that in the central part of the district. And then we do have still strong growth happening in the northern part of the district. Um, and we want to be very careful about future construction of new facilities in the district in terms of how we've been fiscally responsible about those. Um, and so when at all possible, we want to defer the timing of those future facilities. And if possible at all, we would like to push them kind of off the table altogether if, if that becomes possible. All right. Um, down in the bottom corner, you'll see this, uh, definition of defining and refining opportunities to optimize facilities based on community feedback. And what that means is we have facilities that are below 80% of capacity, um, some far below 80% of capacity. Um, and through communication with our community, through feedback with our community, we want to make sure that we are utilizing those facilities in the right way. And so we're going to talk a little bit about what that might look like as we go forward. We'll quickly just talk about, um, our projections from the last demographic update that we had. Um, these are our middle school campuses, um, and this is with the new zoning that is currently in place, um, for the 24, 25 school year. Just want to point out that we have, um, in blue, those campuses that are below 80% utilization. And so you can see Canyon Ridge, um, declining steadily over time, um, as well as Four Points Middle School holding pretty steady, um, at that close to 70% mark. Um, Danielson drops below there for a little bit, but then climbs right back up to 100% of capacity by the end of this, of this, uh, period. Um, down there in the bottom right corner, of course, you can see Styles Middle School hitting, um, capacity and then blowing very quickly beyond capacity. And so at some point in time near the end of this frame, we have to have some kind of a solution for making sure that we can manage that capacity. So just want to kind of lay the playing field for what that looks like. Um, this is the high schools, uh, same data, um, of course, from the October 2023 demographic update. Um, you can see Vandergrift High School slowly and steadily declining in student population over time. Um, Rouse High School, on the other hand, is rapidly adding. Um, and then, you know, sitting steady right there at the end of the period, around 120% of capacity, something that we're going to have to monitor carefully, um, as we go through this period. Um, and then you can see, you know, uh, where all of those other high school campuses are as well. So again, I want to come back to this question of making sure that in all of this, we're really considering this, what do we want learning to look like in our classrooms in Leander ISD? And as we focus on where is the ownership for learning and pushing that ownership wherever possible to the learner, um, that has to be what drives everything else we do in the district. And so with that in mind, um, I want to make sure that we know already a lot of what that looks like through our graduate profile. Um, and you'll notice that nowhere in this graduate profile is there anything very specifically about specific content. There's nothing in here necessarily about how we measure that content. These are the skills and attributes that we want our students to have accomplished for themselves and own by the time they leave us so that they truly are independent learners, empowered learners who can go forward into the world to their next step. Um, and so these become incredibly important skills for us to work on. So just a quick reminder, the long range planning committee is currently working. We have our next meeting on March 19th. Um, they are working in three areas right now. These are the subcommittees, um, of the long range planning committee, um, on facilities optimization. Um, and remember that means that we're looking to see how do we manage those campuses in the district that are falling below 80% of capacity and, and make choices about that. Um, they are looking at schools of choice, um, from two different angles. Number one, policy to make sure that we understand exactly, um, how those are going to work. And they are currently talking about that name, schools of choice and, and potentially understanding that from a, from a different perspective. Um, and then the third group is really working on reciprocal communication with our community as we continue to really work diligently with our community to understand what their hopes and dreams are and what they want for their children and how we accomplish that, um, not only with the learning in our classrooms, but also with the facilities that we have. So I have a few things that I want to run by you and, um, would like a little bit of, um, engagement and conversation about. Um, the first of those is an idea that actually floated up out of the long range planning committee, and that is opening enrollment in the central and southern portion of the district. And what I mean by that is, um, opening the district to accept in students from outside of our district boundaries, um, as transfer students into the district. Um, this has not made sense for us before as a fast-growth district, um, until now. Um, but as we have more and more campuses that are underutilized in the central and southern portion of our district, um, this is something that now becomes possible. And so, um, there's a couple of things around there that I'd like to talk about before I pause and, and allow us to have some conversation. Um, of course, there's a lot of work that we need to do to understand exactly what that means and how we do that in terms of policy at the board level and the direction that the board gives us, um, in terms of actual procedure inside the district. How do we manage, uh, transfers coming from outside of the district, um, as well as the transfers that we have in between campuses in the district? Um, and then I think very importantly, how do we engage our campus site-based committees right down at the campus level to help us with this grassroots conversation? So how do we get them to really explain to us what works for their community, what works for their campus and how we can do this well? I give you an example, um, at Fabian Elementary School, they had actually requested Dr. Grissom to come out and visit with a group of parents, um, to talk about what are the potential options? And as part of that conversation, I think what surfaced is the fact that there are lots of different ways to do the same thing. And so as we talked to them, one of their ideas was that potentially we don't have to get rid of the community neighborhood school that's there, um, but we could add some other programs into that school to enhance the enrollment and make sure that, um, they really are, we're using that facility the best way we can, but without losing the ability for those folks who live in that neighborhood to still attend that school. And so those are the kinds of conversations that I think have to bubble from the bottom up. Um, but what I'm asking for today is just some conversation and some direction from the board about whether you would like us to really start to dig into this concept of opening enrollment in the central and southern portion of the district, um, to students from the outside.
Look, all the lights are lit up.
I was just going to say, let's share the mic. So give your option and go to the next board member and then we'll go back around.
All right. So thinking about the central part of the district, um, yes, there are elementary schools that are underutilized, but the middle school and high school are not. And so if you allow transfers into those elementary schools, then you end up with a bottleneck in the middle school and high school. And I also think that when it comes to, we did, I, when you showed that, um, the slides about the percentage utilization, that's really based on what the capacity is known to be for the students, the 2,400 for all the schools and 2,900 for Vandergrift as far as high school is concerned. I think the exercise that we did for elementary school, we actually need to do that exercise for middle school and high school because there's so many programs that are at different schools. So even though it, we might have a certain number of classrooms, some of those classrooms have been claimed for programs that we have, whether it's our CTE programs, especially in the older schools that were not built for those, that were, um, basically repurposed to introduce those. So we really, really need to take stock of what we have before we can start doing anything.
Thank you. Yeah, that's a great point.
So, um, last night, the facility optimization committee was very busy, um, and I was there to ask two questions and listen well. Um, and this discussion came up, um, in part and, 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 well, I guess it came up side conversation, but one, we talked about more districts than you actually, more campuses that was on this list. So just know that list was a sample. I think there's a bigger discussion that's at play. And I think our community does want to know, when we see this decline in enrollment, um, what can we do to help bolster our community? And I think this is something I would like to see pursue. I don't know if I'd say full steam ahead, but I think I'd like to hear what, what comes out of this. In light with what Shad said is how do we make sure we don't connect, create that bottleneck? How does that look? Um, but I think how we grow these campuses are important to our community. Um, and I'm hearing them say, what can we do? Um, I think this is something to, to kind of pursue. Oh, within reason, right?
I actually really like it. Um, I do agree that the central schools probably need more time and more evaluation because their numbers are not declining like the southern schools. So maybe a better avenue would be to start with the southern schools because there is no bottleneck to create there. See how it works there, see what the demand is there. And then that gives administration time to go through the process of evaluating where the central schools are at. What do they need? What programs are people who are coming in? What programs are they wanting in the new schools? How do the communities feel about it? I think it's a great way to encourage enrollment and to open up and to get better utilization out of those facilities.
I guess my question would be is, um, looking at it from a, a what-if perspective. What if regeneration happens in the South? Then we've got kids that are in our district and do we still have room for them? So that's something to consider as well, too. I think making sure that, you know, the kids that are living in our district have a priority over someone that comes in from the outside. And how do we make sure that we're very clear, clear as kind, um, to make sure that, you know, if you have a spot, you have a spot up until. And, and if that until never happens, great, but what happens if that until comes to fruition?
Great point. Thank you.
The, uh, population demographics that you put up there, that's with our knowledge of the current birth rates and move-in rates and that's what they're predicting?
Correct. Yes, sir.
If we do the open enrollment, the, just to be clear for the public, and we allow them to come in, they would be on their own for transportation to and from the school, correct?
That's how we do transfers most of the time. Yes, sir.
Um, that's a lot of traffic, too. I'm, I'm going to go real quick, Janey. My concern, I think it's a great idea, but I think how we approach it is, it's going to be a case-by-case basis for each school, right? Because different communities have different enrollment. My main concern though is the transfer policy piece. My main concern, though, is the transfer policy piece, whether it's in district and also out of district. As a mom who utilizes that service, because we already have school choice in our district, I find it to be a little complicated and not very streamlined. And so I feel like if we're going to go down this road, which I think we need to, because we're seeing other districts across the state of Texas open up their districts, and I mean, our district's amazing, why wouldn't anyone not want to be here? But for me, I need to see a solid policy in regard as to what transfer looks like, because I feel like right now, it's kind of hit or miss at each campus. I need it more streamlined, so we know at the end of the day, when we do a rezone, we're not doing all of this rezone and allowing everyone end up to transfer back in and finding ourselves in a situation where we're in two years having the same conversation. My other concern is, and I'm going to go there, open enrollment, we know our special education department in Leander is amazing, we, I'm not going to be negative here, just what does that look like on our staff positions? We already know we have a 6% increase this year for special education. We know if we open it, they will come, and so I just want to make sure that those schools at the central and southern part we do open have the special education staff they need, so we don't find ourselves in a compliance issue down the road.
Thank you.
And are we going to get some input from the students, the teachers, and the administration as well, as to what they expect to see? Because the current student experience is one thing, and I think that we need to make sure that that's as solid as it can be before you start trying to look, there's still a lot of work that needs to be done before, in my opinion, before this should be considered.
Yeah, absolutely.
And also considering things like the infrastructure, the cafeteria, the parking, traffic, just, it's a lot.
So I think some of the questions that have been raised are things that the Optimization Committee has already been asking. And so they have identified different campuses, so I think you can use their work to build off of. The same questions they asked about parking, about transportation, about age of the building, all these things, they've already got a really good blueprint that they've spent tons of time to develop. But to Shadie's point, I also agree about that grassroots communication, which is why I love the idea of engaging our site-based committee, right? Your principal, your staff, your parents, let's get them engaged and talk about what it is we see for our community. So I love, love, love that idea.
I just want to add to my transfer thing, if we do do this open enrollment, to make sure we're not putting any barriers on certain student populations, so everyone has a chance to come to our district, and we're not, you know, funneling students over here, students over here, because they can't get in for, you know, a disability or whatever. I just want to make sure it's open to all, and we're following our AEA policy, local policy that this board adopted.
Yeah, so just to be clear again, what I'm asking for is exactly what you've given me, so vision and direction from the board, that we can go forward and start to really explore this in more depth, in more detail. There's a lot of work to be done, and we may come back and say, no, this is not a good idea after all, based on all the work we do. Or we may come forward and say, you know, we're going to do it in this modified way or something like that. But I really felt like it was important that we get some feedback from you before we go any further. All right, so jumping on to the next one. So we've been talking a lot about early childhood and pre-K specifically. We, of course, are working on early childhood centers and what that looks like. We know that we currently offer pre-K 4, we currently offer pre-K 3, but we also have a waitlist of students and families who would like to access some of those services that we cannot accommodate right now. So this other idea of tuition-based pre-K is something that can help to fill up seats in our classrooms while still balancing that fiscal responsibility. And so again, I'm going to just pause and see if there's any thoughts about tuition-based pre-K, not about should we do this right now, yes or no, this is just simply, do you feel comfortable with us pursuing this as an opportunity to see if that's something we want to bring back to you at some point in time?
Yes.
I'm also a yes, and just with the addition that I really want us to make sure that we're concentrating on the staffing piece of that as well, because things are going to get real interesting. And I just want to make sure that as we're talking about bringing more kids in, because I love the idea of tuition-based pre-K, I think it's great, I just want to make sure that we're also, as we're looking into whether this is a possibility, that the staffing is included there as well.
Excellent, thank you.
So is the waitlist, right now, does the waitlist include people who are not qualified or for the free program?
So I think right now, the waitlist, I'm going to speak, I think the waitlist only includes eligible students right now.
Eligible, okay.
This would open up for other students as well on top of that. Am I speaking truth? Is somebody going to correct me?
Okay.
Ben says yes.
And when you, because I'm trying to think of the waitlist, would you first clear the waitlist, or there'll still be people on the waitlist? I'm trying to understand how this fits in, so that's one. And then the other part of it was whether this is just for cost recovery, and it's, so it's not necessarily, gosh, like your standard preschools that you have out there?
So...
And for people that need that?
Yeah, so these are, these are all of the questions that we will absolutely ask, that we do not have answers to yet. I will tell you that the reason that we would do this is not just about fiscal responsibility, but really also about, we know this is great for our students, because we have data that shows us that students who have been in both pre-K 3 and pre-K 4 do much better in school as they go through school. And so that would be our primary reason for doing this. It has those added benefits then of filling up our classrooms.
And it's just to fill up the underutilized campuses?
Correct.
Elementary or, okay.
I guess that was my question, is if we do this tuition-based pre-K, are they going to be located at the hubs that we've identified? And then what does that look like when we open up, I'm not going to say its name, the Early Childhood Center, we don't have a name for it, nobody freak out. What does that look like? And my other, I think we need to do it, I want to do it, because it's a, I mean, to be honest, it's another service in our area where a lot of families have that barrier, because they can't afford private pre-K, because it's expensive, it's very expensive. And I love that, if we can provide this service, to me, I keep thinking about the students who are not aware of what Childfind is, and the early intervention model we could provide for those students and what that looks like. But again, going back to staffing, making sure, we, like I said, we see that increase of students at that pre-K level as far as being identified for special education and making sure that those campuses are fully staffed and we don't find ourselves in a compliance issue.
Anecdotal information, I hear our community say that they are on a waitlist on several locations, they cannot get their kids in places, this is impacting work, this is impacting our community, and so this could be something we could offer to our community. And it sounds like the amazing opportunity, I'd love to see y'all pursue it and see what kind of package you can present.
Yeah, I agree, because initially, it sounds like, oh, the district wants to compete with the local schools, but there are, for years, there've been lots of waitlists even for the local preschools. So I think there's enough to go, more than enough to go around. But I'm thinking of those maybe for, not just those are eligible that are on the waitlist, but then the next step where you can find another, maybe salary or household income bandwidth and offer to them next, because it's a lower cost?
So again, just to be clear, we're not saying that we're doing this, we're just saying that we are going to go ahead and start to pursue and understand what all of the parameters are around, what this could look like. But I just wanted to make sure that we visit with you before we actually jumped into anything like that. All right, one more. In this one, what you saw tonight from Henry Middle School is just one example of the many things that are happening across the district in order for us to really reinvent and make sure that we're putting the ownership of learning where it needs to be, which is with the learner. Along with those come opportunities to pilot, but then expand and accelerate that across campuses. And so what's happening at Henry Middle School right now is, 6th grade started with a pilot, I think, and I may speak wrong here, so 6th and 7th grade maybe started with a pilot last year of just one unit. This year, they're expanding that, and they're doing all of the units. And then hopefully that expands to not only all the science classrooms at the campus, but then also other classrooms on the campus. But the great thing that happened here is, as Dr. Ellis got engaged with our science specialists, he started sucking in the other middle school principals, and now they're asking for us to go and make sure that that kind of science instruction is happening on their campuses, too. And one of the things that happens, though, is that sometimes those things happen at inopportune moments that we haven't necessarily planned for, and there are one-time costs associated with us being able to accelerate that implementation. So what I'd like to bring back to the board is, and ask for a fund balance commitment for a fund that allows us to start to issue grants that act as catalysts to accelerate some of this work across the district. I say one-time costs very specifically, because we're not talking about staffing, we're not talking about ongoing costs, we're talking about one-time infusions that can help to be catalysts for this work. And so I'd just like to get some feedback, if that's something that you would like me to bring back, explore a little more. Obviously, these things would be well-documented, very detailed in terms of what our expectations are for what happens with those funds, and we'd be regularly reporting back to the board about what they're used for and the results that we're getting because of that. But if you're interested, I would like to bring that to you at a future time.
So I'll add more words this time. Big resounding yes, because what we saw tonight was amazing. And I think that walking the halls of Henry Middle School and hearing the action that happens, and I know Francesca was like floored, she came back and told us, she was like, you would not believe this. And the learning that goes on, not just from a teacher-to-student situation, it's student-to-student, it's student-to-teacher, it's students together, it's classrooms together, it's how we operate in the world. And if, like they said, we're going to send these kids out in 2034 and 2044, what's the world going to look like? They have to be able to collaborate with each other, they have to be able to talk to each other and work through problems, and that's what we saw tonight. So, you know, yes, there's the fundamentals of, you know, reading, writing, and arithmetic, and that's what we hear about a lot in some of the circles about, you know, get back to the basics. But you know what? The basics aren't what we see in the workplace. The basics have a place, but seeing the learning in action tonight, big resounding yes, go for it.
So I, as I was watching that video, I think what it made me think of was, in some of the elementary schools that we visited some years ago, how their PTAs provide different, I guess, solutions for them or for the students to do their collaboration. And that definitely creates a divide across the district where a school's PTA can provide and another one cannot. And so this would be an opportunity for the district to kind of harmonize, but in this case specifically for the middle school science. And is it specifically because of the 3D science that, or the new TEES, rather, that this will be trying to address?
Yeah, so this is a perfect opportunity. We have new science TEES that we actually like, which is fabulous. So now we have great standards that actually center on learning. We have an opportunity to get new instructional resources that have this 3D learning approach. And then we're connecting to our experts in district who are preparing our facilitators of learning to really be able to work with these kids in the right way. So we have kind of this perfect storm coming together of opportunity specifically in science at this time. But our math folks have already been doing this for more than a year, with, you heard them talking about building think in classrooms, that resource has already been implemented across the district. And it's happening in social studies with inquiry-based learning, you started to hear Dr. Ellis talking about that, and it's been happening in language arts for a very long time. It's actually a little easier, I think, in language arts than it is necessarily in some of the others. What I'm super excited about is, and they mentioned it earlier, we've seen it on the periphery already for a while, in CTE, and fine arts, and athletics, and all these places, but where we haven't been seeing it as much as in the course. And now we're starting to see that start to take root and ignite, and I'm very excited about that, and I really want to help to make that go as fast as possible.
Just my last sentence, so I think that, or comment, that, yes, it is necessary. I think, just like Christine said, it's necessary for us to provide these for the students, the question is just where the funding is going to come from, whether it's going to be fund balance, or if somehow we're able to magically squeeze or Pete, maybe Pete can work some magic. So that's, yeah, so I would say, yeah, finding different ways.
I, like Christine, am also a resounding yes. Like she said, I had a chance to go sit through the Socratic seminars with the 7th graders. I've also gotten a chance to see the science curriculum and to see what everybody's doing with the new science stuff in KKK, and it's incredible. It's very, very different. It's not how I learned how to do science at all. And I think I've said to you before, we have to start doing things differently, because the world that I was educated in doesn't exist anymore. These students have to be educated for the world they're going into, just like, you know, they were talking about. And if these one-time grants can help supplement these new programs, or help our educators to go get more learning for themselves, so that they can improve how they're teaching all of these new programs, anything that's going to help us get more education that these students need, I'm totally fine with.
Yep. So I think Henry School might be one of the best-smelling middle schools, based on my visiting our Henry Middle School incubator EDU and the projects they're working on. But seeing those kiddos talk, and then Vista Ridge next door talk, the students talked about how, you know, like, we just don't want to sit and just hear, sit and get, we want to be interactive, we want to engage. And I love it, because it was CTSBA who was visiting, another trustee challenged and said, yeah, but didn't you do some sit and get to get the basics? And I'm like, oh, yeah, for that, but now. And I think that's what it is, is the basics aren't just the only level. It is compiled in, you get level one, and then you move them on up, and so I love that. But that situation that I saw, that already has funding. And so that's what I would like to know, is later, when you start doing this, is I am also a resounding yes. I think committing some fund balance, what amount, we'll want to know, and we'll want to make sure we understand with Pete how that impacts. But also, when you say catalyst for transformation, what projects or what things are you, how would you kind of define it just a touch more? And I do think, when you go back to, what do we want learning to look like? It is all those things that are in our strategic plan and graduate profile when you put them together and our mission. We want to see the kids do the ownership of learning, we want them to be the most sought-after creators of our future world. And I believe what I heard up there is, you know, with the world that they're going into, right? And we want them to have learning experiences that embody the LISD profile, which means interactive, cross-discipline, connecting students to the passion and to a purpose. That's the kind of projects I'm thinking of here, and I think we saw that, I think we're all in a line, but I think it would just be good, clear as kind, who all gets to try for this, so.
Thank you.
One last, one last thing. What about partnering with LEAF on some of this? Is that a possibility?
It's always a possibility, and Kaline is a great partner with us. We haven't had that conversation, I want to make sure we had this conversation first, but we are constantly talking and meeting, and so we will certainly have that conversation.
I had a question, I went back to Shadie, I know a lot of the times, our PTAs and our PTO, you know, they are approached by, you know, their campus, hey, you know, we want to try something different. And those funds do come out of those budgets, and so one, I'd like to see that, because that does create an equity piece across the district. And I know PTAs and PTOs will be happy about that. But also, my, I'm all for this, as long, you know, making sure we're streamlined and everyone has a chance, you know, to apply for it. My concern, though, is we heard tonight, we had amazing specialists come in and basically help, you know, help teach our teachers and help guide them through this. What is that going to do to our specialists? Like, is that going to, you know, we start having all these amazing grant opportunities at each campuses across the district? Are those two individuals who came up here, are they going to now have like 10, 12 campuses to help, you know, guide through these one-time opportunities? And so that's... And so that's my concern is just making sure that we're supporting our math specialist, science specialist, everyone at that level to ensure that we're giving them what they need, because at the end of the day, they are the ones helping teach our teachers and teach our campuses. And I mean, we saw today the impact of what happens when you have a strong team like that. So I just want to make sure we're taking care of them while we're doing this as well.
Absolutely. Thank you. And just a reminder again that this is the initial phase of this. And so our job now is to go away and do all of our due diligence and make sure that we bring you back a great product.
I would just only like to add that I like the idea. And I like the idea that it's going to be moving forward to teaching these kids, like what they're doing at Henry Middle School. I mean, he was very profound and I love his presentation. And I want it to be so that, well, maybe if we could to look at more than just a one-time need, it would be great to teach a kid how to fly to the moon. But I don't want the next class, we're only going to be able to teach them how to do a rowboat, right? So if we're going to take that forward, it'd be nice to take maybe another step of can we do something long versus just short?
Yeah, absolutely. I appreciate that. That's a valid thought. Okay, thank you. I've taken up a lot of your time tonight. I know you didn't anticipate that. I think we've talked a lot about learning and I do believe that's a really important part of our governance duty. One shout out to New Hope High School. They allowed you to see the amazing work that their kids are doing. And so this is real ownership of learning right here too, that you get to see. My last observation is just something that happened at this table tonight. And I just want to point out that the struggle and the learning is not just with our kids. The struggle and the learning is with all of us. And so at every level of the organization, you heard them talking about the fact that this has not been easy. This is something that we've had to adjust to. This is something that we're still learning about and that we're going to continuously improve over time. And so we bring you these ideas and knowing that we're going to make them better and better as we go over time. So thank you very much for your input and for your engagement tonight.
Thank you, Bruce. I do want to say thank you for giving an update on the long-range plan for the board members who don't sit on that committee. I appreciate that. All right, board members, we are going to get down to our agenda now and we're going to kind of move around since we have some guests who've been waiting for us. We're going to go to 7C1, the science material and 18-plus transition service building project update. Woo, we're excited. And we have quite the crowd. And we're ready when you're ready.
Good evening, board members. Dr. Gearing, we're very excited to have an update on the science material and 18-plus transition project. And it was part of the 2023 bond. And so I'm going to turn it over to the team that knows all about it and give you a great update. So Brian?
Good evening. My name is Brian St. Clair. I'm a construction project manager for Leander ISD. And thank you very much for allowing us to present to you the science materials and 18-plus transitions project. Very excited for this. So tonight, we're going to, you know, talk about the scope of work, the project design, next steps, and then of course, any questions that you might have. We want to acknowledge everybody and thank you again, board members, for allowing us to be here. And then the district representation and everybody that's been part of the design and the collaboration that we've had, so. So the scope of work is, go ahead to the next slide. No, no, it's working. Thank you very much. Essentially, what is happening is we're, with the Science Materials Center and 18-plus Transition Service Building, it's a comprehensive experience that supports district staff to distribute ready-made kits for hands-on learning. And then it supports students with special abilities and mobility by providing a transition to community and adult living, real-world job training and personal growth. So the capacity for the 18-plus transition services will have roughly 150 to 200 students. It'll, both facilities will have meeting rooms, there will be central commons areas and training classrooms. With the 18-plus transition services, we roughly have a little over 30,000 square feet and then the same over in the Science Materials Center. And then we're also going to have outdoor trails and a covered canopy connecting the two facilities. So then on the next slide, thank you very much. So as we go through this, really the vision behind this project was to be able to ensure that students with special abilities and mobility discover a path to independence, practical job training and personal growth. And so we've built both of these facilities close together because the 18-plus is going to be working with the science materials in sorting and learning real-world jobs. And it's a fantastic idea to have these on the same campus. And as we look at the overview, then we'll see exactly how that's laid out. So the next slide, hopefully. So I'm going to hand this over to Kimberly and she is going to talk about this.
Good evening. We are incredibly excited about this opportunity and definitely have to give a shout out to the board for their support for this facility. And we are very thankful for the passing of the bond so that we had this opportunity for the Science Materials Center as well as the 18-plus facility. So thinking about our current conditions, we are serving students in portables. We call it the hub of Heinz Cedar Park High School, as well as we rent some space at the Twin Lakes YMCA to serve our students. And so when we got the group together, we got all of the teachers, Justin Pine, Denise Geiger, Amy Rudd, a whole crew of people together. And we were imagineering the perfect. If this was the absolute best facility for our students in 18-plus, what would it include? And boy, did we vision and we had quite the list of wishes that we hope to have in this facility. And so we presented those wishes, insert VLK. We got to meet with them and they've been incredible and listening to all of our many, many, many ideas and trying to make that vision come alive. And we also did some touring of other facilities so that we can get some ideas and we can vision and get some inspiration. And then we brought that back and got some feedback. And one of my favorite parts is we got feedback from our current students who are accessing these resources. So yes, the staff is important, but we also wanted to make sure that it was a facility that fit the needs of the students that are going to be served there. And then we did take that tour at Rosedale School in Austin ISD. And then I again have to give a shout out. This is not my vision, this is our team's vision. And Justin and Denise have done an incredible job making sure that we get this right to best serve our students.
Hi, I am Brenda Howard and I manage the Science Materials Center. We met with, had five or six stakeholder meetings with various people in our department, in the curriculum department, instructional materials, and came up with this fabulous building that gives us enough room to house all of our materials, all in one location in addition to the, all the textbook instructional materials and also materials from all of the other curriculum departments like math and language arts. So all of the instructional materials will be housed in one facility that will be really nice for everyone. And we're looking forward to really enjoying this great new space with the opportunity to work with the 18-plus students. Desperately great need for that, so we appreciate that.
So as we go into the project design here, I'm really excited to be able to share what all the teams have come up with for this design. So if we look at the next slide, this is, this is the kind of macro view here, 10,000-foot view. This location is just west of Transportation and south of Plant Services. So it's going to be on New Hope right there. It's 9.1 acres, so it'll be a brand-new build for us. And when you look at this, on the left, you have the 18-plus building and on the right, you have the Science Materials building. There will be, we've already put into place here future expansion for both. So you can see to the north for 18-plus, adding classrooms there. And then to the east for Science Materials Center as well, because we know we're a growing district, right? So this is really exciting as well because Plant Services will have a drive coming from there. So the collaboration that we'll have with the deliveries and just the efficiency that we'll gain with partnering with Plant Services and not being so far away like we are currently with science materials is going to be a tremendous help in the way that we operate things. So then as we go to the next one, here's the floor plan for both. Again, you'll see the 18-plus on the left and the science materials on the right. And the canopy in the middle kind of shares, they share the canopy in the middle. And what that is, is it's going to be two distinct buildings. So when you come up onto the campus, you'll know this is 18-plus and this is science materials. But it also is showing that we are in collaboration and the students will have that access right into the science materials of going over there and working and getting those real-world experiences. So what we're going to do is we're going to break down each area. So this is the north part of the 18-plus. And Kimberly, I don't know if you want to go ahead and talk about that?
Sure. So our goal with this space is to have a community college feel for our students. They have done their time in high school and this is the time where we help them be independent within the community and achieve the dreams and goals and help them, whether it is, you know, taking an additional year so they're ready for college or they are going into the workforce, we just want to make sure that they have the skills that they need to be able to access their community effectively. And so the purpose of this space is to look like a college, feel like a college, so that they can take ownership and pride in their next steps and their independence. So you'll notice at the top there, that space leads out to outdoor walking paths, outdoor facilities, because, you know, connection with nature is really important in accessing our community. You'll see a fitness space there. Many of us access the gym. And so we want to make sure that our students know how to do that and they can access that as well as apartment living on the left. So how do we make a bed? How do we do our dishes? How do we cook within a kitchen? You'll see there, kind of in the middle, right above collaboration, is a residential-type kitchen with an island, cooking and creating and shopping for meals, making shopping lists is a huge part of becoming an independent person within the community. And so we're teaching them to do that. Lots of flexible classroom spaces. We did allow some space for growth. You know, there's not a lot of fixed furniture anywhere so that we can, if we are, you know, doing art one day, we can roll the furniture how we need it. If we're doing more collaborative time, we can roll that furniture however we need it. Big, open hallways so students can gather, sit at bistro-like tables and really collaborate together and have that independent feel in their learning environment. You'll also notice in the plan, we have several built-in sensory spaces. If you're like me, there might be times where you need just a minute on your own to reset or just to, you know, study on your own. And so there are sensory spaces, both accessible from the hallways, but also built into our classrooms should a student need that and needs a supervision, so our staff is still there. Lots of individual conference rooms and office spaces. Students are meeting with the Workforce Commission. They're meeting with their job coaches. They're holding their own ARD meetings. And so there are lots of spaces there for our students as well as our staff to come together, learn together, bring in the community. You'll see the Community Sales Lab. I had to look to see what that was called in the bottom right. And so as our students are creating, we can have a store for people to come and access there. And we have commons areas at the top as well as a commercial cooking lab that eventually the community will be able to come in and access some meals that our students have created or snacks that our students have created. So lots of flexible space and a great learning environment for our students in 18-plus.
This is our beautiful building. We're so excited about it. I know that also the curriculum, the curriculum staff is super excited. We were able to incorporate some training facilities for them in our side of the building. So there's one large room or they can divide it into two, so they can have two trainings going on at the same time. Our current facility, I have like five working areas and this facility gives us like 10 to 13 work areas, which allows us to really spread out and have all of our material stored on the shelves and maybe not wrapped in pallets in the back until we need them. So we're all super excited about that, having a central hub for our workroom so everyone has really easy access to that. The back of our warehouse, the bottom half of the warehouse is the textbook room. And the larger space is where all of our science materials will be held. And then we will share a dock. We'll actually have a dock where trucks can pull in and we won't get wet outside any longer. Those are our big things for us. We were able to get some extra water spigots outside, so when we have to wash things or clean snails or clean butterfly habitats, all of those things is important. We're hoping we'll have some grass designated for us to grow some milkweed for our monarch butterflies and that envisioning maybe those are things that the students can help us water and take care of the garden. So yes, I don't know what's, is that good?
So real quick, as you look at this rendering, I do want to thank VLK Architects for putting everything together. We have Gabby and Barry here at the table and then Omar and Sarah are also here in the audience. And I just really thank their team because they've listened really well and they listen to all the stakeholders that are involved, all the users, and they're able to really deliver a great facility. So the idea here is we're, this isn't the final material. We're just, this is an idea of what it could look like, but really it will not say 18-plus on the outside. It will, it probably won't say science materials, but we'll identify it in another way. But we really love how, when you come on the campus again, that this is two distinct buildings, right? They serve very different areas, but yet the collaboration, and that's really where that shared roof, the collaboration, that shared breezeway there, where they can come together and learn so much. And the 18-plus students, the adults, they're coming in and learning what's going to happen in the real world. So it's a great opportunity to be able to do that. And so as we go into more renderings, you can see that this is looking from the outdoor trails. Talking with Justin Pine when we were out at YMCA, one of the things he had talked about is he didn't want the students to lose that outdoor area. And there, a lot of them like that opportunity to go walk in nature. So it was really important for us to be able to incorporate that into this design. And it was great to have over nine acres to be able to work with and create some of that same feel that they get out there at Twin Lakes YMCA as well. So here is the commons area. So on the interior of the 18-plus, you're looking at kind of what the commons area could look like. And it's just, it's a great open concept that really is really inviting. And again, it's really kind of like a small college feel. We want them to feel like they're coming in and they have the space to kind of do their own thing, so. And then as we look down, this is in one of the hallways, there's classrooms to the side, but they have that kitchen that they're going to be able to learn. side, but they have that kitchen that they're going to be able to learn from. And just like Kimberly said, it was, it's a great opportunity for them to learn the real-world skills that we may take for granted every day, so.
Something that we want to point out here is, we are in the design phase and having conversations about textures and colors. Many of us, as we look out, we view the world straight in front of us. We have many students who might be reclined back in a wheelchair. And if you'll all take a look up, it's not very visually appealing for those that their eye gaze might be up. And so you notice in the picture there, there is the idea of making the ceiling not only that supports for sound, but also visually appealing for our students that have the eye gaze that would be up towards the ceiling versus out in front all the time.
Yeah, absolutely. And we're also achieving some of that texture with different tile on the wall, different textures on the wall. So somebody might be able to, visually impaired might be able to just feel the wall and know that which corridor they're in. So it's a lot of thought and design is going into this, and so we're really excited. This is the apartment. The, so again, this gives them that real-world scenario. How do you, you know, manage yourself inside an apartment? And I have four kids, and I want this for them as well. So it's a great idea to be able to achieve this in this process, so. These are the training rooms in the Science Materials. Again, this is a great opportunity for the curriculum instructors to be able to come in here and do some trainings. We can do a large training room, or we've also put it in where we can divide it into two training rooms. And then this is the module work area, where if you look in the top left-hand corner, that's their current conditions. And so now you understand Brenda's excitement when she talks about this, because this is incredible for her and her team to be able to work out of, so. So our next steps, as we move forward, on the timeline on the next slide, you'll see that we're still in the design development. Our plan is to go and start construction documents on April 24th, getting the GMP-1, and then hopefully GMP-2 around July 24 as well. And then construction ending around July, that summer of '25, so. And then, questions?
Board members, do you have any questions?
So I'm trying to understand that space in terms of the Science Materials Center. You talked about five work areas right now and things just all over the place. So imagine if you take all of that and put it in this new building, about how much space would you have left over without even any, adding any extra stuff?
I'm going to say there will be maybe one area that could be open. Not knowing what the new teaks will hold with the I M A adoptions, all the materials were changed, so the shelving units that I have now may look very different next year. Some of those spaces are reserved for like math, language arts, and secondary science. But I feel certain that the amount of space, those little rooms are much larger than we have now, which will give us extra room to store material that we currently have to store in the back of the warehouse.
Yeah, I was just trying to understand whether the size of what we have in this design is sufficient for not just taking care of what we have now, but what's coming up and as we have growth in the district. I did see that you had that extra space for future expansion, but just trying to see how we can think down the road.
Absolutely. And to give you some, a little bit of scope of size, right now, their current building with the offices and warehouse is 5,000 square feet. Their warehouse alone, in the new design, will be almost 8,500. So their warehouse is bigger than their current space with module, work modules areas. So it's a great opportunity to be able to give them that space, but also giving them that larger space and then adding another, I think it's 2,500 to 3,000 square feet on top of that, we're definitely considering that future growth. Thank you.
Just really quickly, I'm so happy for both, I mean, I'm so happy for y'all. This is going to be amazing. Just wanted to say a shout-out to our community for voting for the bond. This could not have happened without them. This could not have happened without the work that our district did to get the word out about what that bond meant and what kind of differences can make in, not just the lives of our students, but the lives of our staff. And you think about how excited she is about the Science Materials. "I've been to Science Materials Center, this is going to be amazing." I'm so happy for you guys. So kudos to you. The design is beautiful, and thank you for being so thoughtful about the spaces and the textures and the eye gaze. I mean, I didn't think about that till you told me to, so, great job. That's amazing.
I'm going to echo Christine. This is incredible. It's a beautiful building. It's designed really well. I am thrilled that the Science Materials Center gets an actual space that y'all can move around in and that you can utilize. And I'm just thinking of the streamlining that that's going to do for your processes, where everything is just not on top of each other. But the thing about this building that is just, sorry in advance, this building is working for the students in it. As somebody with multiple family members that have to bend and twist and try to fit and try to belong in the building that they're in because it wasn't built for people like them, this is amazing. This building is, it's facilitating the things that they need and making it easier for them to concentrate on the skills that they're learning instead of the environment that they're in. And it's beautiful, and I so appreciate the work that you all have done here.
I just want to say I'm super excited. But most importantly, I love the emphasis of talking to our students in the 18-plus program. I feel like a lot of the time, not us, but others may assume that those young adults don't have opinions, but they do, let me tell you. I'm just, I'm so excited. The opportunities I think we're going to create for those students is going to be endless, and I'm just, I'm so excited. And yeah, I just want to disclaimer, that is not the name 18-plus Science Materials. Just want to get that out to the community. We haven't done any naming ceremonies, nothing like that. I did want to just ask, I'm sorry to put you on the spot, do you, how many students do we have currently serving in 18-plus?
About 125 students.
And so this is going to increase the capacity and allow us to serve more students in our district?
Yes, and there's room for growth. So we have eight classrooms, as well as Project Search currently. This allows 10 to 12 spaces to serve our students, in addition to the vocational spaces and the fitness space and the apartment living. So lots of growth opportunities.
Again, I'm excited. I think it's going to create a community that has been needed to be created. We know it's kind of sparse out there, but to have our 18-plus program all on the same campus with our Science Material Building, y'all are going to be seeing me a lot there, hanging out, so thank y'all.
Can you just give me a number, like, capacity-wise, it will expand it by? I know you said 120-plus, but like, is it 300 or?
150 to 200 is what it's currently built to serve.
But the one, the future expansion, when there's that future expansion over there for the students?
So the future expansion, as it's shown now currently, because we're accounting for impervious cover, is an added four classrooms to that space.
And when I visited in Cedar Park, where they are right now, they're not always all there, because a lot of times, a good number of them are out at their jobs and a few people are in classrooms, so it looks like it's just a lot of space, even though it's built to house like the number of students, but most of the time, you might have like, I know, half or two-thirds of them in there at a time.
Yes, they are coming and going all day long. But this facility also provides opportunities for us to do a better job of collaborating with our high school ICAP programs and our high school vocational teams. Right now, we don't really have the space to do that, but this offers the opportunity to bring them over for those community outings as well.
All right, I don't think we have any other questions. Thank you all so much, we're excited. All right, board members, we're going to take a 10-minute break. So, break, and y'all better hurry up, be back. So, break and y'all better hurry up, be back. And we are back from our break. Board members, we are now gonna go to 7:00 A.M., Special Programs Update. Kimberly, it is all yours.
Awesome, thank you for having me again. You're getting to spend a little bit more time with me after our excitement around the 18-plus facilities. We are incredibly thankful and very excited. That's just one more opportunity for our students in special programs. And so tonight, the purpose of this presentation, let me see if this one's working, yay! Is to give you an update on the growth in special programs and the progress of our team in accordance with the strategic plan. So, gonna start with some demographics and some data, and also give you some of the work that we have been doing with our students, and inspiration from our students from this year. So there is no secret or surprise that we are continuing to grow. While other student groups might be declining in enrollment, special ed is showing up. So, we historically grow about 6% a year. And when we polled this, which was about mid-February, we currently serve 6,319 students. We proudly serve 6,319 students in special programs. So we thought it was important, as we look at how we are staffing, this is staffing season, to really understand who these students are and their eligibility criteria for special education. And so you can see some declines, or some increases, in several of our areas, specifically our students on the autism spectrum, as well as our students with learning disabilities. Some of that is due to the shift in the dyslexia laws and changes there in the dyslexia handbook. But you can see that we are continuing to grow, as well as grow in our students by eligibility. And we currently serve, in special education, 14.8% of our district, and for students with through a 504 plan, that's about 9% of our district. So we have lots of students that we have the opportunity to serve each and every day in Leander. So dyslexia is quite the topic right now, as a new handbook is coming out in June. So we wanted to show the historical number of students receiving dyslexia services in our district. And again, another trend, we are on the rise, with 5.2% of our students are served through, with dyslexia services. And we thought it was important, with the shift in legislation, to break that down by the number of students with dyslexia that are currently served in special ed, and the number of students that are dyslexia-only, or that are currently served through a 504 plan. By the end of '24, '25, all of these students will be served through an IEP under IDEA in special education. Evaluations are also on the rise, and so this is some historical data on the number of evaluations that we have completed. And I want to point out that these are initial evaluations. And so this year, we are already, as of mid-February, going to surpass our number of students that we have evaluated last year and the year prior. And I wanted to add there that we have approximately 1,900 three-year reevaluations. So every three years, our students are reevaluated. There's about 1,900 of those, in addition to the 1,701 that are right here, pending and already completed this year. I can't move past this slide without giving a shout-out to our educational diagnosticians. Our evaluations are done by a team, but our educational diagnosticians are a huge part of that evaluation process, and we are celebrating them this week. So shout-out to our incredible educational diagnosticians. Every six years, we engage in TEA cyclical monitoring. It's a very kind way to say, a TEA audit for special education. And it was our turn this year, or this past year. And so I wanted to bring that data to you, to show you our performance in that cyclical monitoring. There are two parts to that. It is a policy review, as well as a folder review, where they actually look at student components of student IEPs, to make sure that we are in compliance there. So these are all of the areas that they look at in the TEA cyclical monitoring, dyslexia services, as well as our House Bill 4545 intervention services, child find and evaluation, IEP development, content and implementation, properly constituted ARDS. So you can create a beautiful IEP, but are you holding that ARD in the appropriate way? State assessment, are state assessment results thoughtful, and do they match services for our students, as well as transition? I'm very proud to say, we did this coming out, this was our first normal-ish year after COVID, and I was like, oh, great, so we are gonna be audited coming out of COVID. But you know what? I am incredibly proud to share that we were 100% compliant in all areas, except for one, we did have non-compliance in the transition folder review. And that, what that looks at, is the way we write our transition goals for our students that have transition goals. We write them because those are action-oriented, and students at the age of 14 are putting a goal in for what they want to be when they are out of high school. And so we would word those goals, "Dr. Gearing plans to be a superintendent." The requirement under TEA is to say, "Dr. Gearing will be a superintendent." And so it's semantics of plans versus will, is that area of non-compliance there. We also receive an annual, many of you are having the same reaction that I did, but we have fixed that, and we are on it, and we've done training, and we are gonna be great there. We also get an annual report, called the Results-Driven Accountability Report. This report looks at demographics in several areas. It includes early childhood, our emergent bilingual programs, as well as special education. And I'm proud to share, in special education, we are overall determination level one, which is the highest level that you can earn in meets requirements on the RDA report. This looks at our student groups in comparison to each other, to look for significant disproportionality in our student groups. You can be on that for year one. It's essentially saying, hey, you have a disproportionality, take a look at this and see what you can do to ensure that your students are in the right instructional arrangement, and you're serving them in the right setting, and they're getting their needs met. Then you go to year two, if you are still disproportionate in that area, they give you some recommendations on things that you can do to help improve. And then year three is where TEA comes in and supports with that. We do have one area where we are in year three, and that is our Asian students that are served in self-contained classrooms. So they are coded a 44, which means that they are in the inclusive setting, less than 40% of their day. We do have quite the increase of that student group within our district, and we do have a large population of students that have come in, that are non-speaking, that we're working on communication with, and they are on the autism spectrum. And so this group of students is receiving the proper services to meet their needs, but we do have a disproportionality in between our Asian students and our non-Asian students in our district. So that's something that we're gonna be working with TEA on, providing additional training, corrective action plans, we're gonna be doing folder reviews, we've met with principals, we're meeting with our specialists, to make sure that everybody is aware, and we can really look at those inclusive opportunities to ensure that what services our students are receiving actually match the coding within the IEP. And are there opportunities for our students to be served in the general ed environment more? So we're digging into each individual student folder. So we got to start the night with Bruce talking about, or giving an example of a student getting to share their voice with Tasby. And so something that we are very big on in special programs is that student voice. You heard earlier where we had our students on the 18-plus design team give us feedback on the facilities, but here are several examples that we have for inclusive practices, as well as student voice within our district. In the top right, we had three students. Many of you know that we have had an autism grant for the last four years. That has ended, we are applying for a new autism grant, so we invited our students to come in and help provide feedback on, what do we need to do? What are those innovative services that we can provide to better meet your needs as a student in our system with autism? And they were incredible. Carver at the bottom is, was from Cedar Park High School, and he got to present at the Special Olympics annual breakfast that they had recently. And he shared his story on how Unified PE and Special Olympics has really supported him, and so they got to hear his voice. At our IA summit, we had a student panel come and talk to our IAs about services and how we can celebrate the staff that serves our students, but also give us some feedback on how we can do better. And then the last picture there is a student from Parkside. They did a project-based learning exhibition, and their job was to research a disability and come up with an item, or product, or service to help somebody with that disability. And those sweet girls there were so excited about their watch. And their watch was designed for somebody with ADHD, and it talks to them and reminds them to sit and be quiet. And so I thought that was really great, and they were so excited to share all that they had learned. But very practical, how many of us walk around with a watch on that tells us all of these things, stand up? And so they created that for somebody with ADHD. For empowered staff, as we have for the last year and a half, we are continuing our listening sessions, we call it our Listening Tour. We have staff on campuses every single day, all year long, but it means something different when my director team and I get to go out and sit with our teachers, and with our instructional assistants and related services staff, to hear from them. What's going well, what's not going well, how can we better serve you? What are those things we're asking you to do that you think are ridiculous? Like, what can we take off of your plate? We ask them to say yes to a lot of things, but we don't often say, what can we say no to, because of these other things? So we're really trying to be thoughtful and listen to them as we engage in those. We have also, some of the feedback that we got from our listening sessions was to ensure that we are providing meaningful professional learning for all of our staff. We have staff that has been here for a really long time, and every day, we're getting new staff members on our team. And so how are we differentiating our learning for the staff that has been here, and the new staff? And providing choice sessions, it's like mini October conference is what we try to provide, every time that we bring our teachers together, and we're getting a lot of positive feedback about those shifts. We're also really targeting our instructional assistant team, we have about 500 instructional assistants across our system. That includes pre-K, special ed, fine arts, PE, Quest. We invite anybody that wants to come, this is not a special ed-only event, because everybody serves our students, and so any instructional assistant can join us in that professional learning. It's monthly, we also have video, you know, six or seven-minute videos with discussion questions. One of my favorite is "Don't Take the Bait." And it is a quick video on how to not engage in amp-up situations in our classrooms when we're working with students, and how to pause and address those later. So just quick learning that has really been helpful, and we're getting a lot of great feedback there. For recruitment and retention, you can see the picture in the bottom right. We are very thankful that we have a great HR staff that is always looking for ways that they can partner with us to recruit and retain special ed staff. And so they invited us to come and meet at one of their recruiting events, and our special ed staff was able to talk with them about our programming, and help support them in not being afraid to step into the special ed world, if that's something that's new for them. And we are, we just held a special ed job fair last night, virtually, so we're trying to do lots of different things to recruit, so that we can continue to serve our students. And a huge shift that we have done this year, something that I'm incredibly excited about, is our co-teaching. I know that Matt presented to you about this, you've heard some of this data a couple of times, so I'm not gonna go over all of it, but I do want to remind you that this was an initiative that we did in both Kinder and First Grade reading intervention, and then Fourth and Fifth Grade on our Title I campuses for math intervention. So we have shifted our staff into co-teaching, so that our students are not losing access to that natural learning that happens in the learning space by pulling them out of the classroom. And so the data up at the first three bullet points is data that you have already heard, but in kindergarten, we are required to do a dyslexia screener for our kindergarteners. And it looks at letter knowledge and phonemic awareness. And we assess those students through that screener. In kindergarten, these students, we had 753 that were flagged for possibly needing some additional reading support. Those same students, after this reading intervention redesign, in First Grade, were reevaluated, and we had 248 students that are still on that list. So that's a huge celebration, and decrease in the number of students that are at risk for reading difficulty because of this initiative. You know, at first, when we said that we are gonna take SRP, and we're going to give them a new title, and we're gonna revamp their entire position, as you can imagine, we got lots of feedback. But we are thankful that they trusted us, they tried it, they engaged, and some of our SRP teachers that are now reading specialists that pushed back the most are now our biggest champions of this work. In our listening sessions, I have not had one elementary campus that hasn't brought this up on their own and said something very positive about this intervention. And so the level of collaboration with Chris's team and my team to best serve our students has just been incredible. And the four or five math intervention, we have 56% of our co-talk classes that had 80% or higher of projected growth between BOY and MOY. So we look at this data on a quadrant, and your bottom-left quadrant is low achievement and low growth. And so we did have some classrooms there, on some of our Title I campuses here, and after engaging in this co-teaching strategy, we have them moving up into that top right, which means high growth and high achievement. So while overall, our math data is not where we want it to be yet, we are celebrating the growth due to this math intervention with the co-teachers, as well as partnering with the curriculum team, with the math curriculum specialists, both on campus at the district level. The partnership has been incredible, and we're really doing great work in moving our students where they need to be academically. Impactful family engagement, this is something that we take incredibly seriously. We love engaging with our families, and so we started a parent advisory council, which is essentially a PTA for our students and our families in special programs. And so we are going strong with that team, we are trying to figure out at this point, what's the work that we want to do that is gonna have a big impact on our system? And so I have to give a shout-out to our executive council, as well as all of the new faces that we are getting to see in our workshop nights and our general council meetings. That's how we hear your voice face-to-face a lot of times, and so we're thankful. And so when you see those, we send out the reminds, come and join us, we want to hear from you, we want to learn with you, and want to continue that partnership through our parent advisory council and our workshop nights. We also want feedback from our families about the ARD process. You've heard me talk about that in the cyclical monitoring, but I want to know day-to-day, what is your experience? As many of you will remember the COPIA report, we had some work to do in the ARD committee, and so we want to know how that is going for our families. Both in the ARD meeting, we also, while COPIA didn't include that, it's important for us for our students that are served through a 504 as well. We've had thousands of ARDs, and this survey goes out at the end of every annual ARD. We don't have the participation that we want, but we will take any data and feedback that we can. And overall, you can see all but six are scoring a four or five about that ARD process. But the ones on the left over there, that are highly dissatisfied, well, I want to know why. And so our parent liaison does look at that, and does follow up as needed, and then if there is a message in there that we need to make sure that we're working with a principal on, or working with an ARD specialist on, we do follow up on that. And then also, if a teacher is named in a celebration, that makes a teacher's day to receive that. So when we receive these ARD and So, when we receive these ARD and 504 surveys, it is important for us to get that feedback, and we actually do take that. We do read every single comment, and we look at every single survey because we want to do better and we want to serve our families. And so, here is our 504 experience data as well. So, overall, very positive for those that are completing the survey and their experience and their collaborative meetings with the campuses. On equitable access, we have really been targeting student transition. This year, we talk about transition quite a bit with 18-plus, and Denise Geiger is masterful, you know, with Samantha and Justin, and that team is masterful at student transition. But we're really focusing on student transition this year from one level to the next. So, early childhood to kindergarten, fifth grade to sixth grade. We know that fifth grade to sixth grade year is incredibly overwhelming, and then also eighth grade to ninth grade. So, our campuses, we talked with our special ed team leaders. We brought up this concern. We've gotten a lot of feedback in the COPIA report, as you also saw that in the cyclical monitoring, and so, we really are focusing on that transition. We have middle school team leaders that are inviting their elementary team leaders to come in, visit classrooms, so that our elementary staff is able to speak more confidently about the services that our students are going to receive in middle school. And most of the time, there are some times where schedules conflict, but our middle school as well as our high schools for incoming freshmen, those team leaders attend those ARDs so that they can help know about the students and help answer questions about that transition. We also believe that students need to participate in their ARD and their 504 meetings. You heard me talk about student voice. Well, if we're making a plan for our students, our students need to be there. Our students need to have part in that meeting, even if it is... We have three-year-olds that are participating. Monica Kalusian and our Child Fine Team talked about a three-year-old that popped into their ARD meeting the other day, and it just completely shifted the tone of that ARD meeting and just excitement, because that's what we're there for. And so, really encouraging participation in ARD and 504 meetings and tracking that and encouraging our teams to bring students in even for abortion. Tell us what you like about school. Tell us what you don't like. Tell us what you need to learn, all the way to, as they're getting older, leading their entire meeting independently is important for us. We've also been engaging with the Office of Educational Access. Did I get that right? I got you. And really looking at data on our student groups and really targeting access for our students in special programs in many student groups, but in our area, really looking at how are we continuing to break down barriers for our students in special programs? And so, we've got a couple that I want to highlight here. So, this is our LISD percent that are college, career, or military-ready. I want you to look all the way over to the right, and that is our special ed student group. Huge celebrations there. This is a celebration of the transition services, vocational services, the incredible teachers that work with our students. So, huge celebration that our students are exiting above many other student groups, and that doesn't often happen, not that it's a competition, but it doesn't often happen for our students in special ed. So, we're really proud at how we are exiting our students into their next chapter of life. So, we're really celebrating there. And another here is our percent of students earning high school credit in middle school. So, these are eighth graders. While we are all the way over to the right there, we are at 51%. This is a huge celebration for us. You can see that we are only increasing. We're moving in the right direction, but I think this is because of the increased access, the increased options at middle school. I know our middle school principals are really looking at what are those additional courses that we can bring in for that high school credit? So, just the number of courses as well as awareness of barriers within our system. Think about, there was a program that we offered when I was a middle school principal that had an application process, and it required a recommendation from a math or a reading teacher. Well, for a student that has a learning disability and they really struggle there, their behavior might not be the best in those classes. And so, that was causing an access barrier for some of our students to access courses. Awareness of that, conversations with Dwayne and his team has really brought that to light. And they're unintentional, but until you have the conversation, you don't know to even look at that. And so, lots of different reasons why we believe this is going in the right direction, but also a huge celebration for us, for students in special programs earning high school credit in middle school. For safe and innovative learning environments, you heard me talk about the autism grant. We have finished our communication boards project. So, as you are out doing campus visits, I encourage you to look in the common areas and spaces, and you're going to see a big communication board on the wall for our students to access and engage with each other for our non-speaking students and our students that do speak to communicate together. The picture there is an example of one that is on our playgrounds at our elementary campuses. So, we tried to put these in a lot of our common spaces where our students in special programs are interacting with students that are, you know, do not have a disability to open access so that they can participate in their learning environment in a meaningful way. We also have Unified Champions. That is a growing program in our district, and we have 26 campuses that are participating from two last year. So, that's also a big celebration, and we're going to continue to grow there. There's a picture at Stiles Middle School where the Stars hockey team came in, and they're PE pals, so it's students with and without disabilities in this PE period. We have several of our campuses doing this, and they played hockey together with Ringo, and they loved it. So, continuing to grow the Unified Champions program as an innovative learning environment for our students. Okay. And it went back to the beginning, so I'll just stop it right there. I hand it over to you for questions.
I'll start it off. I know. Shocking, but I did have conversations with Kimberly, so we will not be here all night. I do think this is important, though. If we could go to slide five. I don't, I'm not sure if our, my board members or our community is aware of the new dyslexia recommendations that are coming out and the impact that it's going to have on our special education department and also for our students. So, can you give our board and the community an update on what that looks like? What does that entail? And most importantly, is it funded by the state? Which...
So, the Dyslexia Handbook is changing. They came out, TEA came out with new guidelines for dyslexia services this past August, and we were to implement immediately the new dyslexia guidelines. And so, essentially, it is shifting our direct dyslexia services. In the past, it has been served through 504 as well as special education. They have decided that now dyslexia services are specially, is specially-designed instruction. And so, students that receive direct dyslexia services are now going to be evaluated and served under IDEA in special education. And so, the impact that that has is there are some requirements that also come with this, that our evaluators, so to be evaluated for dyslexia can no longer be done just by our educational diagnosticians or our school psychologist team, that a dyslexia specialist, and I'll go through the three criteria with you, has to be part of that. They would consult already, but they have to be more involved in that evaluation process as well as attend the ARD committee meeting. And there are three different levels that are in this draft right now, and the first level is that the person has to be a licensed dyslexia therapist. There are a thousand, about a thousand of those in the state. The second level is a State Board of Education-recognized certification. We believe right now that this is where our academic language therapists fall. They have a certain set of criteria for training that you have a certification in that will, I'm calling it a Level Two Dyslexia Educator. We have about five of those in our system. And then, Level Three is somebody that is trained in dyslexia instruction. So, right now, our current dyslexia specialists, and there are three additional certifications that they have to go to, three classes. A couple of them are currently in-person at our region service centers, but it's additional training and requirements for our dyslexia specialists that are already highly trained to serve our students. We are all about additional training. If it's going to support us in better serving our students, we're all in. However, with this three-tiered system, you have to start with that Level One. And it sounds like right now that we're going to be pulling our teachers with the highest level of certification and licensures out of our classrooms. We always want our best staff member serving our students in the classroom, especially when there's a reading disability. They're going to be pulled out to, right now, do evaluations as well as attend the ARD meetings. And so, we're working through that. It is open for feedback and public comment right now, just on the impact. They are saying that this does not have a financial impact on districts. It does, because we're going to need additional staffing here as well as additional certifications, possibly, and an increase in evaluations, which there's cost in protocol, there's cost in staffing there to remain in compliance for the evaluation process.
Can I ask a question, and then I'll pass the mic? So, the individuals who are doing the evaluation, correct? With the new dyslexia roles, they're going to have to need additional training, but we're going to have to pull out individuals who are already in the classroom. So, what happens to those individuals, right? I have a student that has served for speech, right? What does that look like? I mean, my concern is, again, we're going to not be able to provide those minutes and those services to those students who are already identified. Then we start finding ourselves into an extended service year agreement, or in the case, this parent could call an ARD, right? And find us at fault for not following the IEP, which, you know, and legal fines and fees and billable hours. So, I'm just wondering, is, what are, what can we do to help you all prepare so we don't find ourselves in a compliance issue?
Right now, there is a public comment opportunity from now until April 1st, and so, it is our job to provide feedback on the Dyslexia Handbook. I do believe that I heard at a recent conference, the team that is designing this Dyslexia Handbook, there's one current educator on the team. And so, any feedback that we can provide and the impact of this on districts is very helpful. And so, in this, we will either need to increase staffing, we'll need to shift in how we serve to remain in compliance, and so, that will be a little bit of a challenge, but we will figure out. Student services are most important, and so, we're going to figure out how to do that. We will get the, fingers crossed, we will get the final handbook at the end of June for August implementation.
And I just want to go back to something I heard you say in a previous conversation, right? Which is, you were saying this was, the goal of this, right, is the state is, was one of the few that had not addressed dyslexia and put them in a special education category. So, you were talking about the importance of addressing dyslexia and getting the services. So, I just want to, I want to reemphasize what you said earlier. I think that the issue is, though, is how the state is wanting us to do the evaluations with no funding.
Right.
Right. So, if you could recap that.
Sure. So, the evaluation process, when we look at a student needing services under IDEA versus a 504, is the need for specially-designed instruction? Is there an educational need? We have always been wondering about specially-designed instruction for dyslexia services. We are using a different curriculum resource when we're serving our students in dyslexia, even 504 dyslexia. And so, there's always been the tug of, is it specially-designed instruction? Is it not? Texas has always said that it is not specially-designed instruction and that dyslexia services can stand alone under 504. We were one of, I believe, only two states that served that way. And so, I believe that this is their way of shifting that over to IDEA because it is specially-designed instruction, so we can serve those students through an IEP versus a 504 plan. Our 504 plans, the intent is access through accommodations and services that way in the general classroom. So, I believe that was their intent.
I'm, I totally get them wanting to move it to where it needs to go, but again, they're doing this without funding. They're doing it without time. They're doing it without implementation. They're just saying, "Go do it." And so, again, we are left with the responsibility to follow what they say we have to do with no resources. So, that's frustrating. I can only imagine how it is for you.
They do give us an FAQ document that comes out every so often that does have updates along the way to try and provide clarity throughout the year, but we'll get our final document in June. So, I did want to say, they do give an FAQ that gives little bits and pieces along the way, but we do need the final document on how to implement well.
Well, that's handy, but, you know, eight weeks, that's not a whole lot of time, especially if we're pulling people out of classrooms that we already have trouble filling in the first place. So, I'm going to shift a little bit.
Sure. We're trying to plan ahead now so that we have a plan before it gets to the eight weeks of ready-go.
Of course you do, because you're awesome.
We're starting to talk through that now.
Yeah. I'm going to shift a little bit. So, I'm not sure which slide it was on. The Asian students, the discrepancy that we have? I just want to, I want to ask a question, and is there a cultural aspect of that that we don't have a whole lot of control over? I'm asking that question in a way that I think we've had discussions with Mr. Street as well about how sometimes cultures view special education in a way that is, they're worried about stigma, they're worried about labels, they're worried about things like that. So, how do we, as a district, how do we, as a board, help overcome and educate? I wonder if that number isn't indicative of some of that. So, that's just a statement, not really a question. I just wanted to kind of put it out there. And your thoughts on that?
Sure. So, it absolutely could involve culture within this significant disproportionality. And so, we have brought in a trainer twice to meet with our evaluation team on evaluating through heritage language and making sure that we are aware of culture and making sure that that is not a barrier to a student qualifying or not qualifying. It's Fong Pilafax, and she has come in twice to work with our evaluation team. And so, these are conversations that we're having with our coordinator team and our director team, our evaluators, and again, we've worked with Mel and Dwayne to really look at just a breakdown of our data so that we are also aware and are looking out for this disproportionality as well. So, yes, that absolutely could play a factor.
Awesome. I appreciate that. And I think I just have one more little thing, and then I'll be quiet. So, I understand the dyslexia. I'm going to put my math hat on for a second. I understand that we don't recognize dysgraphia as an issue, and if I'm looking at our math situation that we're in right now, and I'm wondering, what are we doing about the kids who are dysgraphic? Because technically, that's not recognized as a disability, and it is. So, what are we doing?
So, you are right. It is not recognized. However, our students are still presenting a need for support in that way. And so, we are engaging in training, and we are servicing that through accommodations in the classroom and working with our special education team to still meet those needs, even though it is not an eligibility criteria. We're not perfect there yet, but it is something that is growing, and we know that we have to be responsive to.
Are we capturing the number of students so that we can at least track it so we can make an informed decision in the future?
I am almost positive that we are, but let me double-check on that.
I have a question. A couple weeks ago at the budget meeting, I mentioned that while we're not necessarily having increased numbers of students in certain areas, we are having increased need for services. And I'm, it's, you know, right here on slide five with the dyslexia numbers. These are students we already had who were not previously receiving services who now are going to. So, this might be more of a team question as I'm moving past my confusion as to how you increase a mandated program this size with no money. Are we looking at all different ways to do staffing so that we're bringing in more people to meet the increased need even though the student-teacher ratios aren't changing? even though the student-teacher ratios aren't changing?
So something that we are looking at is we are looking at creative ways to maximize the use of both special ed staff and dyslexia staff. In the draft of the handbook, our dyslexia teachers are still not required to be special ed certified. They can still serve students in special ed but not have that certification. If they don't have that certification, it means that they can't case manage. And so if we were to remain as-is, that case-managing duty would go to our inclusion resource team that does already have quite the load. And so we're looking at options of, you know, we have done a sped certification academy and paid for an academy as well as certifications for teachers. We did that last spring. We have looked at doing that again. We've looked at stipend options to, you know, if they do agree to get their special ed certifications, because it's not required, seeing if there's an option to give them a stipend. So we haven't settled on what we're going to do yet, but we are engaging in conversations on what that could look like so that we can maximize our dyslexia specialist as well as our inclusion resource staff.
Thank you very much. And I just wanted to say thank you. I know this is a lot, especially as a special education parent. I know this is a lot with the increased ARD meetings and the increased staffing and all the increased work that you all are having to do. So I just wanted to say thank you because your team is really doing an incredible job of making sure that our kids are getting what they need.
I just want to say how excited I am to see the slides that you showed us on how satisfied were you with your ARD experience and how satisfied were you with your 504 experience, right? When we talk about engaging with our community in parents, I feel like the board has really wanted to see that. And it wasn't. You definitely improved it. And I appreciate the board's looking at that. I appreciate Bruce's vision. I really appreciate your efforts and all of our team, all of those people out there that are working with our families to make this a possibility in reality. I also love that you have the scale 1 through 5. Like, you didn't, you know, make the 1 key not work. So we do see the 1 does work. That's okay, right? Those are areas for improvement. And I appreciate you showing us the fact that, yeah, we still have areas to grow, to ask questions, to have learnings. I also love that we see our student outcomes, that the military college career-ready, that is powerful. I mean, that chart alone. Man, put that with the picture of our 18-plus building and you've got such a great visual for what's going on in our community and the growth in our middle school. Again, I just thank you for bringing these highlights too. Because I know we ask questions, like, how can we make it better? And sometimes it's important to take a step back and go, wow, there has been improvement. And so thank you all. Thank everybody. I'm just so excited.
It definitely is a team effort. We have an incredible team who is constantly doing more with less. And they show up every day and serve our kids at sometimes at the detriment of themselves. And they do a great job. That ARD survey data, all of the data that I showed today is because of our campuses and our teachers and our special ed staff and itinerants and all of the people. And so it's a team effort. It is a village to serve each of our students. And we have an incredible team in Leander.
Looking at the reading intervention and the math intervention and the successes that you have seen, how much time do you think? Or how feasible is it to roll it out even further? If there are any plans to do that?
We are in those discussions right now. We're reviewing data, not just number data, but perceptual data. So we're partnering with the curriculum team and the special programs team to talk to teachers, to do observations, check in with principals. We just did a principal feedback conversation and looked at data as well. We had the same discussion with our APs on Tuesday. And so we are looking at, we want to be solid and we want to do it well. And we presented this very ambitious three-year plan, but we're not afraid to pause and look at the data, listen to our teachers and do it really well. So we are in discussions right now. Are we going to expand? Are we going to go to second grade? Are we going to hold on kindergarten first? Or are we going to shift anybody else to co-teach? Those are conversations that we're having. There are no final decisions yet.
I had a question. Slide 16 in regards to access. I just, I want to say I'm so happy because as a parent whose child was almost denied access to an advanced course and I had to advocate because I knew my rights, it makes me so, so happy. Because I went back and, y'all know I love that data chart, the DEI chart. And I went back and looked in 2019 and compared it to now. And it is just amazing, the doors and opportunities that you've created for students. And it's just, I thank you as a parent. I'm just so happy. But that right there, what almost prevented us from having access, right, was our REED, our reevaluation that we had. And again, for whatever reason, I'm not going to bring up that story, brings me to evaluations. And so if we go back to the slide with evaluations and you, at the moment, right now, we have three-year reevaluations that have to occur, right? By law, that they have to happen. And they're at approximately 1,927 REEDs. And then for the year right now, we're at 1701. So my concern is, and y'all know I'm going to, this is my JAM evaluations, Diags and Child Psychologist because that is, I feel like, I don't want to say gatekeeper, but that is like the first step to a student getting identified. And with all this new information and handbook from dyslexia, my concern is that we are going to overload our child psychologists, find ourselves in a compliance issue and where we're having to outsource those evaluations to third parties, which cost us more. So I think this is just more of a comment because I feel like this district and this board has worked really, really hard at providing what's best for students. And I don't want to find us in a situation where the Department of Education comes and investigates us, again, because of bad practices. So I hope, Pete, you're listening. But my, I know budget is insane and stuff, but I'm really going to be kind of annoying board member on this because to me, this holds a big piece to the puzzle. And if we don't have that strong, solid foundation in getting those students in and having the right evaluation and the right placement of services, I feel like we will be paying the negative effect of it two to three years later. And it's not just money and financial, but it's that trust that we have broken with those parents that you and your department and this administration has built up, so.
There was a question over here about putting in public comments. And parents can do that, but there'll also be more information coming to the board later, correct? Okay.
Yes.
Sorry. I just had a follow-up on this particular slide regarding those pending evaluations. At one of our previous meetings, I had asked about how long it takes. And is this the 45-day, the one that takes 45 days? And shortly after that, I heard that it's 45 days from when the parent signs consent. However, there is a lag, there tends to be a lag of time between when the parent requests and before they can sign. Is there any track of how long that is taking and really seeing whether we can? I know that their resources are limited, but if there's anything that can be done to help with that process?
We track the ones that are out of compliance. We are very lucky that we do not have very many of those that we haven't met the timeline. There are requirements for the amount of time for us to respond when we get that request, an amount of time to hold that initial meeting to get consent for the evaluation and talk about the needs of the student as well as complete the evaluation and come back to the ARD committee meeting. Our evaluators are incredibly stretched right now with the increase in evaluations. Normally, we would never take the entire time to complete an evaluation because of the number that are coming in as well as the number of ARD specialists that we have to be able to support those ARD committee meetings. Everybody is packed. And so unfortunately, right now, we are within the timeline. But it's taking a lot of, it's taking up all of the time, whereas before it could be done shorter. So we are doing everything that we can. We are contracting services for evaluations. We are also paying evaluators to work nights and weekends so that we can try to stay ahead of that and get the students the services that we need.
And that's from meeting the 45-day. But there are, I think, the request or the issue also was with, or mainly was with, how long it takes from when the parent requests to when the signing happens and then the start of the 45 days. But it's what happens before the 45 days starts.
We try to get those ARDs in as quickly as we can. We are held to timelines as well for that. But again, teachers are attending a lot of ARDs. We are getting them as quickly as we can. Again, we're contracting to help with that. Our goal is to not take the full amount of time, but right now, with the number of evaluations coming in, we unfortunately are. We don't want there to be a lag. If there is a situation where there is a barrier for a family, we encourage them to reach out to campus administration or us so that we can work through that and provide support for campuses. But I can guarantee you, our evaluators are working as quickly and as hard as they can to get those in.
I can imagine. Thank you.
Last comment, I promise. Back to Slide 16, again, that access piece. Just more of a comment and something I want to kind of dig into later. I know we talked about it when we had our board retreat with Duane, when he brought up the access, but our 2E kids, we know that they, you know, that is a special education accommodation for some of our students, right? They're in the 2E category. As a parent to kids in 2E who were served special education, I'm grateful that we had an IBU program. But I feel like that there could be more of a robust system for those students in our elementary and middle schools. So it's something I want to kind of talk offline and see. Just, you know, making sure that those opportunities for those students do exist and those biases don't come up when those REEDs come up or those evaluations if they're a new student. Just making sure that those students are getting the instruction that they need so we can give what's best for each and every student.
Sure. We can talk about that.
All right, board members. I could stay up here all night, but I'm not going to. All right. Thanks, Kimberly. All right, board members. We're now going to go to 7A2, Discussion of Leading Measures. And we get the two Saras. Is it Sarah squared?
It's Sarah squared.
Yay! Take it away.
All right. While our presentation's coming up, good evening. Madam Vice President, Board of Trustees and Dr. Gearing, Dr. Martinez and I are here just to present our quarterly update around leading measures. You know, as we started this process last year, really aligning all parts of our system from strategic plan to our community-based accountability report to the superintendent evaluation, district and campus improvement plans. Part of that work that we did and even going all the way to board goals is making sure that we are providing you quarterly updates related specifically to the superintendent evaluation so that you have some data about how we're progressing. As we all know, this is all grounded in our five-goal areas that are in our strategic plan. And so we're going to jump right in. So first off, we have our signaling chart. So you saw this back in our last Leading Measures presentation. It is just a way to indicate, do we feel like we're on track for the work in each of these areas? And as you can see, we are on track for the work so far in our district's improvement plan. And so some of the data that we're going to present tonight is related to those.
So the structure for tonight will be very much like what we've done in the past. We'll take each goal and the priorities that you established for the superintendent's evaluation and just try to give you a little bit of update about the leading measures that we have in terms of how we're doing. So the first, of course, is our Empowered Student Learning Goal. As you all will recall, you had a very robust presentation just at your last meeting from Dr. Benz and Christine Simpson. So you've seen a lot of that academic update. We do have an additional update related to Empowered Student Learning, and that is related to a poll survey that we ran with our secondary students. So this graph is very much like the last one you saw, but there were two questions that we included in the survey that really helped us to get a pulse on how we're doing with student ownership of learning particularly. And so we did ask those secondary students about their opportunities to set goals and track their progress and that their teachers, their sense about whether their teachers are encouraging them to take charge of their own education. So you can see, we have about 2/3 of our secondary students, and it's pretty stable and consistent with that that had favorable responses to those two questions. I wanted to also provide you with a little bit of some quotes. So we do provide on the poll survey for the students, actually for all of our poll surveys, an open-ended question. The one on the left is one, so I get to read a lot, a whole lot, a whole lot of comments from surveys. And so the one on the left was one that just made my heart very happy. And so here, you can see, this is a middle school student who feels like their teachers are giving them the opportunity to learn and that they're learning more than they expected, which I loved, and that they're doing better because they have friends and they're connected. They're getting to do clubs. This is my favorite line. Many people fill out these forms randomly, but I actually read them through and you, so you know it is the truth. And so I wish all of our students had the same. But the thing that makes me the happiest is to see a middle school student who says, on their own, "I'm happy to be a part of LISD." It just really brings much joy. With that said, the one on the right is also the type of responses that we sometimes get. And you can see where this is a student who feels like things are being done to them. They don't really see the connection and the relevance of what they're learning. They are not feeling, they're feeling that the rules are burdensome to them and that they're not having any fun. So I wanted to make sure that we showed both of those. And then a little bit later on, I will be able to provide you with some more details about the analysis we did around those student comments. There we go. So our second goal is about empowered staff. And particularly, you've asked us to focus on the degree to which our staff feel valued and connected to their campus, the department and the district. And so with the last Leading Measures, we showed you the results of a poll survey that we did back at the very beginning of the year in December, January. But since then, we did dig into those open-ended comments that we had. And so I wanted to share a little bit with you about the sentiment analysis that we conducted. We began with the, so the themes on the positive side really showed that many respondents expressed a strong sense of community at the campus level and feeling connected to their colleagues in their departments. Numerous comments highlighted positive relationships within specific departments or teams emphasizing collaboration, care and a family-like atmosphere. There was also a strong, positive sentiment towards their colleagues. And so we had people telling us, describing their colleagues as amazing, caring and supportive. And then some respondents also praised their principal or their specific administrators for fostering a sense of connection and support. On the concern side, we did see some comments that mentioned significant cultural differences between campuses and departments that impacted that overall sense of community. We also had several respondents express feelings of isolation, whether that be due to being new or changing campuses or facing some challenges in building connections that did come out. Trust in administrators varied, with some expressing trust issues and feeling underappreciated by the district and others expressing a strong sense of trust with their administrators. And then finally, the workload, the reoccurring theme that we have seen, which is the strain of the heavy workload, the stress, and sometimes feeling like they're being asked to do the impossible. Additionally, we do have some additional themes that emerged from the comments that we saw in this survey related to communication, particularly between departments and with the district. So the sort of silo idea. And also a desire for more input. That was specifically teachers wanting to be more a part of decision-making at the district level. We also heard a sense of community was highly dependent on the specific teams or campuses and that we are really still dealing with some post-pandemic stress that is affecting people's sense of community and belonging here at work. We also wanted to share some of the high-leverage strategies or actions that are happening. are happening. So we're going to begin with substitutes because substitutes are our employees as well, and they have a huge impact when a teacher has a trusting substitute that they know they are so much happier, um, and able to take time when they need to for their families. Um, so this year, uh, I'm sorry, in February, uh, we, um, sorry, included a, we actually have had two different, um, sessions for community members trying to encourage those who want to either become teachers or substitutes in the system. We also have been demonstrating care for and promoting a sense of belonging with our staff by including offerings for educational programs and services through our benefits program. And that included things like offering the BEXA exams for free for our staff, um, and also upping the communication that's happening with the, um, quarterly newsletters. Also this, um, February, we initiated a spring 24 substitute training session. So we're providing substitutes with more information and more training. And also, as you can see on the right there, is trying to spotlight those substitutes and for the hard work that they're doing. And HR has also been partnering with our child nutrition services and our transportation departments to work with them, to, um, support that sense of belonging for all of our staff because everyone in Leander ISD matters. This one is a good transition to go from, uh, engaged employees or empowered employees into our engaged community. Um, and so we have, um, as you all are aware, and I think many of you attended the, the February Volunteer Appreciation Week, and so we really are trying to, um, live into that spirit of gratitude, um, and including that appreciation for our volunteers that makes such a huge, huge difference in the lives of our teachers. The third goal is related to the impactful family engagement and specifically we're working on how, um, or you all have asked us to focus on these leading measures to consider how we're fostering those positive relationships and demonstrating mutual respect. Again, we had the poll survey last time, um, and so I'm not going to repeat those, but we did again, dig into a qualitative analysis on the, the comments. And so I just wanted to share with you some of those themes that popped out of those comments that our community gave us in that poll survey. And so first, we heard that there is a desire for more and more streamlined communications and, um, and concerns about issues with unresponsive teachers and administrators. Um, we also heard an overall desire for increased opportunities for parent engagement, including opportunities to meet teachers, um, and others from their child's class, uh, or from their child's class or their school, to attend conferences, to volunteer and to participate in decision-making process. There were a few comments related to some sense of clickiness in some of the opportunities through PTA and others at some of those campuses. So those kind of shown through that teach, uh, parents are telling us they want to have more of those opportunities. Academic transparency also included concerns about the lack of detailed information about the curriculum and a request for more transparency. We also saw a number of, um, concerns about or comments related to safety, um, specifically involving student drug use, lack of fencing, the need for armed security and a desire for better communication about safety incidents and the measures taken once something has happened on a campus. The theme of diversity, inclusion and accessibility also came out in those comments, including feedback related to the need to foster more, um, diversity and inclusion and providing more accessible engagement opportunities for all of our families. And then finally, there was some mixed feedback on the effectiveness of the communication tools that we use with our families right now and some concerns about an overreliance on the online systems. I think we're all sort of experienced that post-COVID world where maybe we've gone too heavy on some of the electronic communications and they would like to see a more balanced approach in our communications. So we're going to move on to goal four, which was the equitable access goal. Um, we did include for our students, our secondary students that we did a poll survey. We asked them the question about how are we doing removing these barriers? Now I want to just, um, alert you to a change that occurred. So when we first started asking this question back in the 2122 climate survey, we asked about accessing, um, extracurricular as well as advanced programs. And then as our teams were digging into this, we felt like we weren't able to have actionable responses because we really couldn't tell whether they were talking about extracurricular activities or are they talking about advanced programs? And so that's why the graph looks a little funny. You see now we are asking that question separately. And you can see we have pretty high levels of kids who believe that, um, we are removing those barriers. Interestingly, on this one, the number of people who, it looks like it kind of went down, like the people, the students that are strongly agreeing or agreeing. And what, when we dug into the data and looked at it, what really happened was the number of kids who said, "I don't know," went up, um, which really makes sense because most of these efforts that we've had, um, have been really at a system level. And so why would a kid know, um, what was, what's happening? So it does have us talking now about, do we need to communicate differently? Are there more, is there more that we need to be doing? But it was, it's interesting feedback. So of course, our Office of Educational Access has been working closely in partnership with our campuses. The feeder pattern analysis and goal setting is continuing. So these are the high leverage actions that are occurring right now that are, um, moving us forward that we wanted to make sure we shared with you. There's also ongoing professional development for staff that, um, that offices is engaging as well in consultation across the district. And we're really focusing on one of the main barriers that we found, which is the idea of cultural competency for all of our staff. So making sure that we are all approaching our work, um, through the lens of cultural All right, and the last one, how am I doing on time? Pretty good, huh? So the very last goal is related to safe and innovative learning environments. And this one's really interesting. So we did, um, do our poll survey, this, we included these questions. These are questions that also appear obviously on our climate survey. We asked about, um, physical, emotional wellbeing as well as overall engagement in school and then whether or not students feel like they're a part of a community at school and whether they feel empowered to be themselves at school. So this was really, um, these were very interesting, uh, questions. We do see overall stability in our perceptions from our students, um, with a pretty significant disparity between the wellbeing ratings of physical wellbeing and emotional wellbeing, and that's been pretty consistent. Um, so we had 85% of the students saying they felt physically fine, which actually we see a little bit of an uptick on, and then only 61% saying they felt, um, they had, uh, strong emotional wellbeing. So we also themed the comments that came from the students. And so I just want to talk a little bit about some of those themes that came out. So teacher relationships and quality. While many students mentioned positive connections with their teachers, highlighting understanding, um, the efforts that their teachers are, are making. Students who rated their engagement and their empowerment as low were much more likely to include comments about teachers being mean, teachers not understanding, criticisms of the teaching styles or the methods that teachers are using, and some feeling like the teachers just weren't adequately, um, explaining the work that they had to do. So we, we pulled those comments and looked at those separately for those who had high versus low ratings. We also, the open-ended responses also revealed really diverse social experiences, um, including positive connections with teachers and peers. So we saw a lot of like the one on the left where they were talking about, um, how their friends and their teachers are so awesome, but then there were also quite a few concerns about bullying, racism, inappropriate behaviors and challenging social environments for some students. We did find that the students who ranked their engagement as low tended to be the ones that were telling us about the bullying and the racism and other things. So we saw considerable variation in the experiences based on those engagement ratings. So students who reported good or excellent overall engagement expressed positive experiences. They were the, they were the ones that, you know, the comments that made your heart happy with an appreciation for all of the opportunities that were provided in Leander with a strong connection to their teachers. In contrast, those who said fair or poor levels of engagement, that their engagement was fair or poor, tended to highlight behavioral issues, social dynamics, teacher, uh, negative teacher-student interactions, mental health and dissatisfaction with policy. All right. And then finally, oops, I have two going. The, here's a quick update on some of those safety and, um, security requirements that we are in the process of leveraging. We wanted to make sure we gave you that update.
Okay, and so taking it from there, um, as in part of the superintendent evaluation, there is a part three, and as a Board of Trustees, you had identified these specific areas that you wanted to make sure that we were monitoring and bringing you back updates related to this work. So instructional management, staff development, professional growth, human resource management. And that, just a reminder for, um, not only for you all, but for our public that there is the full report related to the leading measures that is linked in Board Book, um, that has a lot more detail than what we are covering in the presentation. Um, so in these particular areas, we just wanted to highlight first in the instructional management, um, our team has been doing incredible work around advanced math pathways. And so there are more details in the report, but what we, um, have been seeing over the past several months is that our teaching and learning leaders are meeting monthly with campus leaders, working through and developing the plan for refining our advanced math pathways, um, specifically working through criteria for identification that's providing flexibility for inclusion of students with potential. Um, so not just having a hard set number, but also looking at those students with potential. And then also identifying important curriculum components. So as we are preparing for this next phase, um, going in for implementation for next year, making sure we're thinking through all aspects of that. So it's been a great partnership that is happening between our teaching and learning department as well as our campus leaders. When we think about the area of staff development and professional growth, we just wanted to highlight during this past quarter, two, um, very big professional development days, um, where you had professional learning that was campus-based and you can see, um, some of the, the components there. And then February 19th, um, we just had a district-based professional learning day and staff coming together, jobalike peers from across the district, engaging in collaboration related to curriculum, content and program-based best practices as well as student outcomes. The other thing that we wanted to highlight that while this was going on during the workday, we also had additionally during this time, over 1,670 hours of continuing education credit that was earned by our staff outside of the workday. So we know our staff are dedicated to growing in their craft. And so even in the short period of time, they were, um, out learning and doing more even beyond, um, what, what we were providing. Finally, the human resources management piece, we are just continuing to provide you with an update of where are we related to turnover? Um, so from January to February of last year to this year, you can see the comparison. The one thing we do want to note is because of when board materials were due, um, this data is only through February 16th. Um, so just wanted to highlight that. So you do see overall, um, a little uptick in, um, in turnover, but when you look at our general education teacher turnover, you see that's a pretty stable because we have, we actually have more teachers this year. So, um, we went, had 14 that we lost last year to 15 this year. When you look at special education, we actually saw a decrease. Um, so that was definitely a highlight. So that does tell us that we are seeing outside of the classroom is where we're seeing that increase in turnover right now. So just something we're definitely monitoring. And again, we have, there was so much more detail in the report, um, that you can go in and dig into more, but we will just open it up if there are any questions for us.
I have a question on slide 24. It's not the first time that we've talked about the secondary emotional wellness numbers being what they are. Not only are most of them decreasing, they're really low to begin with. Um, I know we spent last week at the, the governance camp and that's primarily around student voice and the number of students that spoke about, "We don't have the mental health support we need. We don't have the safety nets we need. We don't have the community that we need." What are we doing about these numbers? What action steps do we have or have we started in place? Because these are, it's really concerning. The fact that, that 50% of our secondary students don't feel comfortable being themselves at school is a problem. So what, what are we, what action steps are we putting in place to get these numbers up to make sure that these students are comfortable in their learning environments? Cause if they're not comfortable, they're not learning.
That, that is a, a great question. It is definitely, um, one that we are digging into because it, it, it's a stark difference in the data, stark difference. And, um, and we know that in order for our students to thrive, we have to think about the whole child. And so our, our, our teams have done an incredible job of really, as I think back to Steve Clark and his work and with counseling and our students, um, sorry, I always get this wrong, the family, student family. Thank you, student family support team, always get those mixed up. And what they are doing to work with, with families as well as students. Um, it's in, it really is important, the work that they're doing and, and working with staff as well and helping to identify and looking for, what are the signals, um, so that you know, okay, here's a student that we need to refer, um, for some more support. And this is, you know, obviously some new data for us, so our team will be digging into it, um, even further and looking at as we plan for finishing out the year.
Just to follow up, is, is this an area that as we're talking about the increased need in special education services, this is the other one really big, this is the other really big one for me. The numbers of students might not be increasing, the mental health needs, the emotional wellness needs of these students are increasing drastically. So is this somewhere that we're also looking at changing the staffing and getting more people in to help the increased need?
I think it's a great question, and I think that's something that we definitely are working on in terms of our proposals for, um, staffing for next year. Interestingly, the SISAC team, the Superintendent Student Advisory have been digging a bit into this, um, and they had started thinking that they wanted to, there was a group that was wanting to work on GPA as a, as a question because we know that, that this pressure to succeed. So, um, I agree that, uh, a lot of what we're doing for those most at-risk students exists, and we are definitely trying to solve that, but we've got this sort of general, like high pressure for excellence in our system that has impacted kids. And the kids have been telling us that in SISAC over the last couple of years. So that one group met with, um, Steve Clark at their, at their last SISAC meeting and are really rethinking, um, their, the probability that they were approaching and thinking more about how do we get better access to counseling services and sports through our counselors at school? Um, so again, that's a work in progress, um, but it is definitely a concern.
I do just want to circle back to the staffing notion. I mean, we are, we did not get funds, extra funds this year, um, from, from the state. And so that is definitely affecting budgeting decisions. And so, um, you know, while yes, there continues to be a need to make sure we're supporting the whole child, that is definitely something we're trying to figure out is how do we balance that in, in all of the other needs as well. But just want to be upfront about that.
So I want to start off with two yays. So I'll hit those high, uh, and first, and then I'll ask you my question, which is a bit of a follow-up on Francesca. So the equitable access, I am so pleased with all the work that I see going on, especially in our Office of Student Access. I loved attending our Leadership LISD meeting and I didn't get to finish their presentation, but I heard great reports on, on it and really good interactions and discussions and what their office is doing. So for- So for that, I'm excited. When I'm thinking about, we're going to go in there, we're going to look at, this is our superintendent evaluation. Like, I can see how that's connected and how we're seeing our strategic plan come into life there. And that's exciting. The other one that I thought was really interesting is like, some of the things that are going on in our human resources. And also, a highlight that was shared during our Leadership LISD. In fact, what was really interesting in that was they were talking about the survey. Teachers are saying, "Why stay here?" Because they asked, and HR's been asking teachers, "Why are you here?" The climate that they're talking about. They say things like, "Our professional development that we offer." So I love to see, like, this to me is still full circle. It's matching that strategic plan. I feel like you are on track. I'm like, okay, when we go in and look at our superintendent evaluation and work on this, I can see that. I'm having a bit of a challenge with some of the items that are presented as baseline, it looks like baseline data more than something we review a superintendent on to say we've made an achievement here. And with it being in our strategic plan, trying to make that connection. So I want to understand, I guess, better. When I'm seeing that, because I could have moments of drama, so forgive me. I'm like, oh my goodness, there's going to be Cs all over these tracking charts. There's a crisis here. But I don't see the Cs. I don't even see support requested. And I'm thinking, well, when I see these numbers, of course, we're off on this, right? So I think I'm missing something. And I want to better understand what this means when we're going to go back and review our superintendent, because this was a huge thing in our strategic plan. And I would like to echo the whole child discussion. Because I don't think this is just a mental health component by itself. I think that is something that's needed. I think it's counselors that's needed. I think it's our Steve Clark and all the great work he does, how are our teachers equipped to deal with trauma? I think this is about the student-teacher ratio and how our students and teachers can actually have that connection. I think it's about the mentorship. Do they feel empowered in their classroom? And so I think there is that whole child perspective. And it brings me back to what our Leander graduate profile says, that we want compassionate community collaborators and adaptive and reflective individuals. And yet, when I'm seeing some of these struggles here, I'm questioning, can we get them to that space in our five-year plan that we had for our strategic plan? And we're halfway through it. So, long question, but I just wanted to make sure you saw, I'm trying to connect these dots, and they're not connecting for me right now.
I'm going to start off and then let Dr. Martinez add on. So I'm going to go to, back to the signaling chart, because this is, I believe, what you, it's taken me a second. Oh my gosh. Okay, on here, so you were expecting to see maybe, like, not on track, maybe if... And so on this, the way that this is formatted, we are indicating whether we're on track or not related to the action steps that we had outlined in the District Improvement Plan. And so what we are presenting tonight is the data that is associated to that. So that data may or may not indicate, oh, yep, we're making progress, but we are, the work, we are progressing on. So that's how that, there's a little bit of a disconnect sometimes. But that's why we have to look at both pieces. We want to look at, what are the action steps? Are we making progress on that? And then what is the data actually saying? What are the, what's the leading measures? What are they telling us? And do we need to make some adjustments or not? And in this, when we have signaling, I'm sorry, when we do the poll surveys, that is definitely that opportunity to pause and go, okay, do we see something we need to respond to right now? Which is part of what we're digging into. We actually just met as a cabinet team this week and continue to dig into some of these pieces. Does that help answer?
It does. It almost feels like I would put it in this, a second part of an evaluation, because this is data you just got, and you've got to monitor it. But yet, we're going to go back and we're going to say, "How are we evaluating you on this data?" So I've got a noodle on that a bit, so thank you.
Yes, absolutely. And that's the whole point, is for you, as a board, to be able to give feedback to the superintendent related to this work, to help give direction. Are there things that stand out to you that we need to definitely consider? So that we're not waiting until the end of the year for you to give that feedback.
And I do appreciate that, bringing that, so thank you.
Okay, thank you all so much. All right, now, board members, we're going to go to 7C2, Discussion of District-Wide Intruder Detection Audit Report Findings. It's our new guy.
Good evening, Miguel, right? Yeah. So I'm excited to introduce to you Miguel Escobedo. He's joining us, he's our new Director of Emergency Management. And he gets to join me tonight in reporting our findings from our state intruder audit. So again, I will apologize, but I'm going to read the script for this. So excuse me while I read. So the safety and security of our students and staff is our top priority. Beginning in September of this year, the Texas Education Agency has conducted 34 intruder detection audits at our campuses, about 73%. The audits test whether a campus is accessible to an unauthorized individual. The audits seek to help districts identify how campuses can improve safety for students, such as ensuring exterior doors are locked and providing an opportunity to create a safer learning environment. Of the 34 audits, we have had six state findings at six of our schools since September. I reported on three in the fall, and we had three additional this spring. As with any state finding, all staff at the three campuses have been retrained to ensure all exterior doors are locked and closed, and any mechanical repairs needed have been completed. We acknowledge that parents and community members are interested in the details of the audit results. However, it's in the best interest of the students that we do not share this information to the broader public, as it could lead to compromising important campus security information. Specific details of the intruder detection audit will be discussed in this evening's closed session. The intruder detection audits are one of the many actions we take to ensure our schools are safe. We know that this work does not end, and we commend our campuses for their diligence and work in keeping our students and staff safe. Thank you.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you.
All right, board members, we're now going to go to 7C3, Consider Approval of Early Release of Critical Positions. Pete, you're up.
Good evening, members of the board. Trustee Smith and Superintendent Dr. Gering. Tonight, we have a request for early release of some critical positions. This is well within what we normally, last year, I think we did this two times. This is our first time of going through this process. We have a total of 19 positions. Can I put them in the wrong order? My apologies. All right, we're going to go off memory. So, no, we have 19 positions, four bilingual ESL, our dual language. We have some special ed positions, and there are nine. All right, how you're looking at it. There's one more, there's six, or four and two. I don't even remember, what are they? Oh, early college high school, yes. We have four teaching positions for early college high school, a nurse and a counselor. Pardon, is it counselor?
No, instructional coach for early college high school. Send me to the rescue.
I can't go read that either. I don't know where my... I don't know where that one went to. I mean, I had it there, had three hours to prepare back there, yeah. So we're bringing these positions to you tonight, a cost of $1.3 million. This is before the 24, 25 school year. The nine special ed positions are what we currently, if you recall, if I remember correctly on a board update, those were nine positions that we hired early, currently out of existing vacancies. But they are nine positions new for next year. We just hired them now, because we had the vacancies throughout the district in special ed positions. But we may or may not have a second round coming later. We're still in the budget process, but this is the first round of the positions that we have identified as critical needs. So if there are any questions, I'd be more than happy to ask those, answer those.
I have more of a comment, just offline, if we can have a discussion. Because I want to understand what classifies early release of critical positions, right? I think everyone has their own definition, right? I'm just trying to understand the process and systems behind that. So that way, you know, we don't find ourselves in a pickle, right? Where we do see an increase of students for whatever department. But that, we can do that later.
Okay. More than happy to do that.
I move that the Board of Trustees approve the addition of 19 positions for the 2024, 2025 school year as presented.
Second. We have a motion from Francesca, a second from Sade. Any discussion, board members? All right, we're going to vote. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Six ayes, no nays, motion passes. And now, Pete, we get you again, 7C4, Business and Finance Monthly Reports.
All right, tonight, we have our monthly reports. Just our monthly bond status report, monthly finance report, our investment report, and our monthly tax collections report. Just a couple of notes. General fund, we earned $1.4 million in the month of January. Debt service, $1 million. And capital projects funds, about $1.2 million. And then for the tax report, just want to do, tax collections report, I just do want to clarify, if you look at the way it's written, it could be misconstrued. So this current and delinquent taxes are at 88.76% collection. Just 3% higher than the previous year at this time. And then the next line, it says 88.66. And that's just current taxes only, that's not including delinquents. So just wanted to clarify that, just in case if you read it real quick and you're like, these numbers don't match. So I just declared for that. But other than that, there are nothing in the monthly reports, other than that, that I wanted to emphasize. But if there are any questions on any of those reports, we're more than happy to answer those.
Pete, are these reports, like, on our financial page as well? Or are they only on the Board Book?
Are they only on Board Book? I didn't hear the first part.
Are they on our financial page? We have a financial transparency page.
I believe they're only on Board Book.
Okay. I was wondering if maybe we could look into the opportunity of maybe, that way, they're all housed in one area, so you can go see it quickly.
That shouldn't be a problem.
Could we just link the Board Book? Because that's a lot of extra work for staff, and it's already online.
No, in Board Book, you have to go to each date to pull each one up.
Right.
So if you want to look at them together, then it's, you can just click on the link and be able to see what each month of the... If it's a lot of work, then...
And we'll look into it. I mean, if it's something easy, we'll do it. If it takes more, maybe we'll bring it back in a board update or something.
Thank you. Any other questions, board members? All right, thanks, Pete.
All right, thank you.
All right, it is 9:53 PM, and the board will now go into closed session for the purposes permitted by the Texas Government Codes. Here we go. Texas Government Code 551071, Consultation with Attorney Regarding Pending or Contemplated Litigation in Attorney-client Privilege Matter. Texas Government Code 551074, Deliberation Regarding Resignations, Terminations, Employment Reassignment, Duties, and Evaluation of Personal Public Officers. Texas Government Code 5510821, Deliberation Regarding Matters Whereby Personally Identifiable Information Regarding One or More Students Will Be Disclosed. Texas Government Code 551089, Discussion of District-Wide Intruder Detection Audit Report Findings. Texas Government Code 551074, Deliberation and Consideration of Employment of State Departmental School Principal. Texas Government Code 551074, Deliberation and Consideration of Employment of Executive Director of Safety and Security Position Will Be Transitioned to Chief of Leander ISD Police. And finally, Texas Government Code 551074, Superintendent Formative Evaluation Quarterly Review. No action will be taken enclosed. Any action related to closed session agenda items will be taken when the board returns to open session.
Still I run towards the wind and let the challenge draw me in, 'cause I want more. Oh, we are all looking for adventure. 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 Oh, wake up heart and wake up mind, see the world is yours to find, and oh. With every passing day, there's more calling you out, out to explore, get up and go. There is joy found in the race, and I feel it in the place where I'm free. And I simply can't deny it, that I feel adventure calling out to me. Yeah, we are all looking for adventure. 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 Looking for adventure. We are all looking for adventure. We are all looking for adventure. We are all looking for adventure. And I'm living free, living free, living free, and I was meant to be. Living free, living free, living free, and I was meant to be. I'm living free, living free, living free, and I was meant to be free. Meant to be free.
Wow.
Hello world, wake me up to another good, good morning, time to go. Got that smile upon my face, 'cause there's excitement in the chase, this I know. Yeah, I'm going for the ride, and find myself, I am alive, and I soar. Still I run towards the wind, and let the challenge draw me in, 'cause I want more. Oh, we are all looking for adventure. 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 Oh, wake up heart and wake up mind, see the world is yours to find, and oh. With every passing day, there's more calling you out, out to explore, get up and go. There is joy found in the race, and I feel it in the place where I'm free. And I simply can't deny it, that I feel adventure calling out to me. Yeah, we are all looking for adventure. 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 Looking for adventure. We are all looking for adventure. We are all looking for adventure. We are all looking for adventure. And I'm living free, living free, living free, and I was meant to be. Living free, living free, living free, and I was meant to be. I'm living free, living free, living free, and I was meant to be free. Meant to be free.
The
It is 11:29 PM and having no further business, the meeting of the Leander ISD Board of Trustees is adjourned.